Good evening. If you will, lower your heads and join me in a moment of silent prayer. And rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, December 5th, 2013. I hope everyone had a joyous and happy and event-filled Thanksgiving and safe travels, certainly to everyone. It was a nice weekend and I know everybody probably over eight and will now want to go to our community centers and places of business to do weightlifting and belt-reducing.
Body shaping.
Body shaping, yes. I'm always pleased to announce that former Vice Mayor Chris Pratcher always said at this time of year that he was in no shape to work out. But it's a good idea and so it's a pleasure to have so many folks here. We're always happy when we have large crowds and hopefully I've-
Got a big Leadership Rutherford contingent.
That's right. We do have a large Leadership Rutherford contingent and I don't have all their names so I'll just ask those people who are participating in Leadership Rutherford to please stand up at this time and be recognized. These are folks who have taken of their time, their recreation and private and personal time to learn a little bit more about our county and our communities within the county and those utilities and all of the services that we have available and the other business opportunities. So we're very pleased that you're doing that and we acknowledge that some of you may be future leaders so we look forward to working with you in the future. Also, I'm very excited to announce tonight that we will begin our second annual Citizens' Government Academy with the city of Murfreesboro and that's going to begin on February 3rd, 2014. And this is a seven-week course. It provides all the participants an opportunity to learn more about our city departments and the number of services we provide here from the city of Murfreesboro. The classes are to be from 5:30 till 8:30 on Monday evenings, beginning again on February 3rd. The cost to participate is $25. Applications will be accepted beginning December 16th here at City Hall or you may email an application to SLOGAN, S-L-O-G-A-N, at Murfreesboro TN.gov. Applications will be obtained at the City Hall through the city's website or can be mailed or emailed to you by, again, sending a request for that application to Shannon Logan, SLOGAN, at Murfreesboro TN.gov. Class size is limited so don't delay in submitting an application. The first class had an outstanding season and this will be no exception so I hope you will, if you're interested in city government and learning about our departments and how they work and operate, I think it's a good way to shortcut sometimes when you have a problem or an issue or something you'd like to learn about the city, it's a good way to do that. Very minimal cost and a lot of great information there. So, our Citizens' Academy, please make an application. I give you that information now. All right. Anything else from council members before we begin our agenda?
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Smotherman.
Just one thing, I noticed that all of our gentlemen who work for the city are neatly groomed tonight and I want to thank the police department and everybody who participated in the No Shave November. The American Cancer Society profited from your endeavor and thank you all for bringing the awareness up and the fine job that you did in participating. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman.
For the American Cancer Society.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Lyons, for that report. And, Mr. Smotherman, for reminding me of that. So that's excellent. All right, council members, you have before your consent agenda. If you've had an opportunity to read through those items, are there any questions regarding the consent agenda?
Move for passage.
Second. All right. Thank you, Mr. McFarland. Mr. Young, please call the roll.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
We'll consider now for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to amend the planned residential development PRD district located along Veterans Parkway.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
Mr. Young, Mr. Smotherman, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to rezone an area along New Salem Highway and St. Andrews Drive to single-family residential 12 RS-12 District, residential multifamily 16 RM-16 District, and commercial fringe CF District.
Move for passage.
Second.
Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Young, please call the roll.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Second.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. We'll consider now for passage also on second reading an ordinance to annex an area located along New Salem Highway and Veterans Parkway.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Young, Mr. Smotherman, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance amending Chapter 25 and 1/4 signs, Section 25 and 1/4-2 and 25 and 1/4-25, dealing with flag signs.
Mr. Appreval.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. Is there a second? Mr. Young, thank you. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for approval a renewal of a certificate of compliance for Sherak Kumar M. Patel and Vishal N. Patel at Georgetown Wine and Spirits, 1720 West Northfield Boulevard. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, this is for owners of a business already in business in Murfreesboro. The state requires they do this process every two years to get a new certificate of compliance and they've met our requirements.
All right. They've met our requirements. Is there a motion that we approve this renewal?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Young, Mr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, I'm going to ask our police chief with regards to an ordinance regarding pawnbrokers and secondhand dealers to come forward. We have, I think, a number of people here who are interested in that ordinance along with our police department and city administration so I'm going to move that up since we have some other things under our planning department and so with the council's approval, I'll just go ahead and move that item 21 up to this time and welcome Chief Glenn Christman. We're happy to have you here tonight.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. We have for your consideration on first reading tonight, an ordinance, some of this language is new, some of it is revised from the existing pawnbroker ordinance that preceded it. And in the letter that was provided to you, there were some interesting illustrative, I suppose, pieces of information that I think are worthy to take note of. I won't read it in its entirety certainly because it's in the agenda materials but there are a couple of things there that I think would be useful as we begin the discussion. A couple of years ago, perhaps as far back as that, some of our criminal investigation staff came forward and began to describe problems that they were experiencing investigating property crimes, particularly larceny, thefts, and burglaries, as it related to the identification of items of property that had been stolen and sold either in secondhand dealer locations here primarily rather than pawn shops because the pawn shops are already heavily regulated by state statute and there are already fairly stringent reporting and recording requirements for pawnbrokers and licensed pawn dealers in the state of Tennessee. All of the pawnbrokers in Murfreesboro are in compliance with those requirements and are, as we speak, regularly reporting and recording that information electronically, which then goes into a national searchable database that law enforcement authorities have access to. Larceny and burglary-type crimes are the most frequently committed crimes in the United States of America. They're the most frequently committed crimes in the city of Murfreesboro. In the material that I provided to you in advance of the meeting tonight, I made some reference to the FBI's annual crime clock where they look at the frequency of crimes that are reported to the police. And in that material, we noted that in the United States of America, a property crime occurs approximately every three and a half seconds. A larceny crime occurs every 5.1 seconds and a burglary crime occurs about every 15 seconds. Now, those are tremendous frequencies of crime occurrence. Thankfully, in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, we're not anywhere near that frequency. However, also from your statistics, you'll see that in last year's reporting, in 2012, a property crime was reported in Murfreesboro every 2.2 hours with a larceny crime occurring about every three hours and a burglary crime every nine hours. As a routine part of our day, we begin our business every morning with a review of those property crimes, particularly those burglaries that have been reported to the police overnight and our staff, our police officers and our criminal investigators work diligently to try and address those through conventional enforcement, apprehension, and prosecution. The pawnbrokers, we said, are already heavily regulated by state statute. When somebody comes in to pawn an item or to sell an item that will be resold, they are required to record all of the identifying information on that piece of property and within 48 hours to report that information to the police and to report it in an internet web-based browser-type piece of software that is not only searchable by Murfreesboro Police but also searchable by police all over this country. The tool that we have been using for many years now is called Leads Online. In your materials, we shared that there are 2,658 law enforcement agency members. Ninety-six of those are in Tennessee, including all of the law enforcement agencies in Rutherford County, as well as Knoxville, Chattanooga, and Nashville and Memphis, I think, are using that on a trial basis. There are 28,000 businesses across the United States that report transaction information to Leads Online. And in a few minutes, we'll have a piece of video that will show you how that works but essentially, transactions are recorded, reported, they go into a database that then can be searched by law enforcement officials for not only the item that we're looking for that has been reported stolen but also, frequently, there are patterns of sales of stolen items by those that are suspected of being involved in criminal activity or the resale of goods that have been stolen as a product of criminal action. With that in mind, we began to see some problems with some of the secondhand businesses with the sale of stolen items. And it became very difficult for our criminal investigators to be able to track those items because there were no restrictions or there were no regulations that were in place to provide that secondhand dealers were required to report and record that information. A number of jurisdictions around us have already enacted legislation very similar to this. It doesn't exactly mirror the pawnbroker ordinance but it's very similar to that or the pawnbroker statutory guidelines. And so essentially, what we have attempted to do is to level that playing field, if you will, for people who are in secondhand dealer businesses so that the reporting requirements that they have would be more similar to those that the pawnbrokers now experience. And that is an effort, I think, to speak for victims of crime. If you have a burglary at your home and you have valuables that are stolen regardless of what those valuables are, the potential for recovering those valuables and identifying the people that are responsible for the theft of those valuables turns solely, or primarily, I would think, on recovery of those items. Now, there's physical evidence that's left at the scene of those crimes but the identification and recovery of those items that have been stolen in that crime are critical to any identification of the suspect and the prosecution of the suspect. So, what we attempted to do was to revise the existing pawnbroker ordinance that was in place to bring the language that was in that document current with what the state's statutory provisions provided for pawnbrokers and at the same time, create some language that created some regulation for secondhand businesses, particularly those who might be in a place to be targeted, if you will, by criminals who are attempting to sell or resell items that have been stolen in property crimes in and around the city of Murfreesboro. Now, there's a piece of information I think that's critical to take note of as it relates to the internet-based web browser-type of searchable database. It's one thing to have information that flows to and from businesses from local law enforcement with regard to local items that have been reported stolen. The fact of the matter is, these things don't observe jurisdictional boundary lines. All too often, there may be a theft that occurs in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, where the items are sold or pawned in locations well outside of the jurisdiction here. So, the ability to be able to enter that information into a national registry that could be accessed not only here in Rutherford County but all across the nation becomes very powerful. Leads Online, the product that we're using now, provides access in that way and obviously, law enforcement officers all across the country can access that information once it's loaded. Adam Tucker is here with me tonight. Adam, obviously, is a member of our legal staff. He worked closely with members of our criminal investigation staff. Deputy Chief Bowen is here. Major Eric Cook. Captain Nathan McDaniel. Detective Abe Von Peady is here tonight to help with any questions that you may have. But I'd like to ask Adam to step up for just a minute and be able to answer any questions that you might have. Now, as we began this process, as we made note of in your materials, we attempted to identify those stakeholders that we knew had secondhand-type businesses in the city and we invited them to two meetings. The first one was held on March 19th in the Murfreesboro Police Annex. We had approximately 20 people that attended that meeting. We talked about the need for this ordinance and the importance of their help to work with local police to try and identify not only stolen materials, stolen goods that were coming through businesses potentially, but also to give us suggestions and ideas about those things that we could do to strengthen the ordinance as it was proposed in its original version. We took a number of suggestions back from that meeting, had a couple of weeks there where suggestions could be offered via email, and then we had a second meeting with those stakeholders on July 30th. I think we had 21 individuals that attended that meeting and we provided them with revised copies of the ordinance at that time and I believe rosters were provided as a part of your materials so that you could see the people who attended those meetings. When Mr. Tucker steps up in a few minutes, he's going to talk to you a little bit about the changes that were proposed, or at least a few of those changes that were proposed from the folks that attended those stakeholder meetings and what we did in response to that. And before we do that, I suppose I would just say one thing to you. You know, we think about personal crimes, particularly violent crimes, as being those things that most often shock the conscience for people who live in a civilized society. The underlying issue with these property crimes is that all too often, the proceeds from burglaries and larcenies and goods that are stolen from those types of crimes when they are pawned, sold, resold, the people who steal those articles are seeking to turn that around and liquidate those items and turn them into cash as quickly as they can. And all too often, that cash is used in furtherance of drug-related crime, gang-related crime, or the general crime of criminal enterprise. So, it's not only important for our city for us to take a strong stand on property crime as it relates to the victimization of the people that call Murfreesboro home from a property crime standpoint but also as an interdiction tool, if you will, to head off other property crime-funded criminal enterprise. Because make no mistake about it, people who are in the business of violent crime all too often are looking for ways to generate money and property crimes are a quick way of doing that and unfortunately, create an environment where people are easily victimized through the theft of property and personal goods. Mr. Tucker, would you like to join me and perhaps talk about some of the suggestions that we received and the changes that were made as a result there?
Thank you, Chief. Members of council, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. As the chief said, we held two stakeholders' meetings and we really took seriously from the outset of working on this ordinance and drafting it, two goals, which were, on the one hand, was to achieve the goals of minimizing the opportunities for defencing or reselling of stolen goods while also minimizing the impact on businesses, especially small businesses here in Murfreesboro. And one of those things is that we, from the outset, we were looking for something from a reporting mechanism standpoint that would not require any fees or subscriptions by business owners. That was one of the things that led us to Leads Online is because Leads Online is free to business owners. The subscription is paid by the law enforcement agency. And the only entities that can access the database are law enforcement agencies to review the items that have been uploaded and identified to the database. In the stakeholders' meetings, probably the comments can be broken down into, and concerns of business owners can be broken down to a couple of categories. The first would be the scope of the ordinance. We have received lots of comments regarding, the original draft cast a very wide net and business owners asked us to revisit the scope of that net and whether low-value items or items that were not, you know, high-theft items, things that were typically targeted by criminals, could be excluded from the scope of the ordinance. Another one was the holding period that we were establishing for secondhand dealers and that's the, the holding period is the period from when the dealer acquires the item, purchases it, purchases it from the seller, to the point at which they are allowed to resell the item to members of the general public or even another secondhand dealer. There are two aspects of, if you look at the ordinance, there are two aspects of that holding period. There's one that's mandated by state law. There is a state ordinance governing a holding period for secondhand jewelry and other articles that contain precious metals and gems. That holding period is 20 days. This ordinance has not changed that. It is, it's, this ordinance is consistent with that. The holding period we'd initially established for secondhand articles that are not jewelry or don't contain precious metals or gems was seven days but we nevertheless had some comments, received some comments on the holding period. There were some comments on the reporting requirements and the electronic reporting system in terms of data security of items, you know, information that they were, that a business owner would be uploading to Leads Online. There was concerns about that. And then some of the personal identification requirements that we were asking dealers, secondhand dealers, to make. For example, an initial draft of the ordinance required them to make a photocopy of the photo ID, whether that was a driver's license or a passport or something like that, that the person who was selling the item was providing to the dealer for identification purposes. We took those comments seriously and we incorporated many of them into subsequent drafts of the ordinance. The most significant ones can be found, first of all, Section 21-93, which deals with exempted transactions, which exempts a whole host of, or categories of articles and types of transactions that are not going to be regulated by this ordinance. For example, 21-93E exempts purchases, consignments, or trades of any of the following articles: antiques, except non-costume jewelry, and non-costume jewelry is essentially anything that is valued at more than $25. Scrap metal, motor vehicles, clothing, shoes, fashion accessories. Costume jewelry is exempted. Children's products, books, magazines, comic books, trading or postcards, coins, stamps, recyclable aluminum cans, furniture, appliances, works of art, and a whole host of sporting goods other than those that are specifically set forth here. And those include things like golf clubs and kayaks and bicycles and water and snow skis, that type of equipment. But the vast majority of sporting goods are exempt from the reporting requirements and holding period requirements of this ordinance. In addition, we exempted certain types of businesses from even having to acquire a permit to engage in the, as a secondhand business. And those were any business that was dealing exclusively in any of those goods that I just listed. Charitable organizations, flea markets, auctioneers, garage sales, things like that. Also, other types of transactions that were exempted were transactions between two secondhand dealers where one secondhand dealer acquired an item, that secondhand dealer complied with the ordinance, and another, and another secondhand dealer came in and bought it. That secondhand dealer did not have to report the transaction. Trade-ins, where with or without additional consideration in exchange for new or a secondhand The purchase of a secondhand article for store credit are exempted. And purchases of firearms made by federal firearms license dealers. And finally, bulk purchases of consignments of new or used merchandise, which would be things where someone was acquiring something from a store that was going out of business, that those are exempted. Another significant change that we made was for the, with respect to the holding period. Again, we could not change the 20-day requirement for secondhand jewelry and secondhand items containing precious metals and gems but for all the other items that are regulated by this ordinance, we heard their concerns about issues about storage and their rapid turnover of inventory. So, one of the things that we wrote into the ordinance, which is in 21-96B of the ordinance, was to allow a way for dealers, give dealers a choice to either hold the, hold the product for seven days or at the time of acquiring the article, taking a picture with a webcam or a digital camera and of the person who was selling it along with the items, those pictures can be uploaded and connected directly to the transaction report on Leads Online. And if they, if the dealer takes those photographs, then they could turn around, they don't have to hold the item for seven days, they could sell it, you know, as soon as they uploaded the photograph. So it could be- So it could be, you know, 10, 15, 20 minutes before they could resell the item. And then two, two other less significant, but, but also important ones were the record requirement. We were at one point in time asking that records be kept both in electronic and paper form. We've changed that. There's an option to keep it at, either as electronic or paper. And if someone wants to keep a paper record, they only have to keep the, the one year, the most recent year of records on file. But they need to keep the records for a total of three years total, but the sec, the two oldest years could be kept off-site. And the last thing was, and I think I mentioned this, had to deal with the driver's license. We initially were asking for copies of the driver's license. We decided to take that out and we are, simply they have to now record the driver's license number or the passport number, or whatever the, the license number, passport number, or whatever the number is on the photograph, photographic ID, they need to record that in the transaction, but they don't actually need to photocopy it. And with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any specific questions you may have with respect to the ordinance.
Mayor, before we do that, we may, I know there's been a lot of questions about Leads Online and how it works. We have a short video that we've prepared. And if I could ask Mr. Burris over in the control room, if you would, Steve, please cue that video. And this will give you a little bit of an idea of how Leads Online works at the point of sale.
My Leads Online is an easy and efficient way for businesses to keep track of their transitions, which aid the police in criminal investigations. After setting up a username and password, click on the ticket information box and enter your business type. Assign a ticket number for your transaction. Then enter the date and time, as well as the cashier name and ID. Then click on the customer information box and enter ID type, ID number, ID state, and ID type 2 if applicable. After that, enter the customer's personal information, including name, address and phone number, date of birth, race, height, weight, sex, eye color, and hair color. Then fill out the comment box. When you're done, click on the add items tab. When filling out the ticket information box, include as much item detail as possible, including color, condition, quantity, amount, brand, model number, and serial code. Make sure to include a detailed description of the item in the description box. After completing these forms, click on the save items tab. If you need to add other items to this ticket, simply click on the add item tab to continue. Once you are done entering all items into the system, click on the submit tab or the submit and print tab. Once the customer has been entered into the system, you will not have to re-enter that person for future sales. All you will have to do is verify that person by their ID the next time they make a purchase.
Mayor, councilmembers, I think at one point when we were working on looking at time consumption for a Leads Online entry, we had a new user sat down that had never used the system before and had to create a business and actually load an item. And I believe the estimated time for that was something between three and five minutes. It's, I think, important to note here that certainly we support our businesses. We know that they're, they're part of the economic engine that drives our community. And we need their help. We need them to work with us to try and help identify not only stolen property, but hold the people responsible that either stole that property, or who are in the business of trying to liquidate that by selling it through any of our unsuspecting local businesses. And this, this ordinance, we believe, and the electronic reporting service that's already in place for local pawnbrokers, will allow us to timely record the information on those items, report it to law enforcement officers within 48 hours, and give our investigators time to identify that property and hopefully be able to question the people or identify the people that have transacted it. One quick story as, as we close, we had a local business owner here that reported the theft of some very expensive golf clubs. And that report came in, was assigned for investigation, and within just a day or so, the victim called Criminal Investigations and said, "I found my golf clubs. They're in a local business here." Detective met that individual at the local business where the golf clubs were and attempted to identify them and to take possession of them. And there was, it was a little difficult in obtaining that until the owner of the club said, "Well, each one of the shafts of these clubs have my identifying information and how to contact me." And they walked over to the rack where the clubs were, and sure enough, every shaft in the bag had identifying information on there. So, you know, it's critically important that we be able to identify items that are being sold upon, and do that timely, and be able to then bring that information into the criminal investigation process so that we can return those things to their rightful owners and hold those responsible who are involved in the theft of those items. At this point, I think we'll stop. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have. And if Mr. Tucker or I can't do that, we have other staff that could assist with that process.
Mr. Young?
Chief, what, so what we're doing is, the pawnbrokers already do this?
Yes, sir.
Everything they're doing. So we're bringing the secondhand dealers up to the same reporting level, for lack of better terms, to what the pawnbrokers are doing now?
Yes, sir. And I would add that Hastings, one of our fairly large local businesses here, already is doing this, and not only doing it here, but all across the nation as well.
What percentage of, do you have any kind of percentage of what stolen property is actually recovered and sent back to the rightful owner?
It's a very, it's a fairly low percentage, frankly. And, and part of the reason for that is because when it's recovered, it's difficult to identify if the owners haven't taken proper steps to record that information, photograph valuables, all of those kinds of things. In fact, one of the tools that Leads Online offers, and you can link to through our website, is an online property inventory, where you can load that information. And then if you're, if you find yourself in one of these crime victim situations, you can retrieve it. Identification of the items is an issue, and frankly, Mr. Young, recovery of the items is an issue. And that's why reporting and records-keeping is such a vital part of this process, both for the owner and for the investigator.
Chief, I've been, you know, I got started in this thing real early, before the first stakeholder meeting was involved. And I still think there's some issues that need to be worked out, or I don't have a good understanding of them. And I'm not going to take two hours of these people's time to sit down and go over every item with you line by line. But as a, as a business owner, and I'm at my front counter, and I've got to stop what I'm doing for five to seven minutes and take a bunch of data down, and then I've got to enter it into a, a database, which is going to take me, as a terrible type, is five to 10 minutes versus three to five. Is there some way we can improve that?
Um...
And here again, I guess I'm going to ask that we defer this until I can get a better handle on it, I can get some questions answered from some of my constituents and some of our constituents that have, have some questions that may not be thoroughly answered by them. And I do know that you have reached out to the community, you have had a lot of meetings with a lot of people. But this is a big deal to a small businessman. And I think we need to make sure that we're listening and answering their questions. We may not give them necessarily the answer they want on every particular item, but I think we need to go out of our way to make sure that we have all their questions answered. And from what I've been hearing the last three or four days, we're not there yet. So I would respectfully ask that we defer this.
Mr. McFarland?
Mr. Tucker, just so we understand, how about, we've got a definition of secondhand broker, but give us a, give us some examples of secondhand brokers.
Sure.
Or secondhand dealers, I'm sorry.
I mean, probably the one that you see most frequently are gold buyers. Either gold-buying businesses, gold for cash, you go in and take your jewelry in. And those are regulated by state, state law, and that is where the 20-day holding period comes from. But that is, the reporting requirements is, and have the requirement that they, they report on Leads Online is something that's, I don't want to, it's, it's unique, or it's, it takes it a step further than state law. Other ones would be, a secondhand dealer would be something that, a business that deals in secondhand sporting goods. The...
How about CDs or DVDs?
That's right, CDs, CDs, video games, DVDs. Those, I would say the three biggest ones would be sporting goods, the, the electronic media, which would include CDs, DVDs, and video games, and, and then the gold and jewelry buyers. Those would be the three biggest and probably the, the ones where it, I think, probably the chief could answer this more, more accurately than I could, or has more knowledge of it, that those would be the three biggest categories of stolen, stolen goods in terms of volume and, and dollar value.
That's probably true. Connected to electronic goods. And certainly you see electronic goods and the sale of electronic goods more targeted at certain venues. But if you look at the hottest items that are being stole from people's cars, or stolen from people's cars, typically you see any of the electronic communication devices. Certainly for a while, from, from residences, you were seeing flash screen televisions, computers, laptops, iPads, iPhones.
Most of those are going to go to pawnbrokers, I would, pawn shops, where most of that were...
A good deal of it will, but increasingly, we see some of that moving through secondhand dealers as well, because the regulatory guidelines are not as strict and the reporting requirements are not there.
My, my two concerns, a good example, there's a nice lady out on 231, out by the interstate, at one of the antique malls.
Mm-hmm.
Been out there several times, and she doesn't have a computer.
Mm-hmm.
So that's an issue for, for people to, you know, so she may take in some jewelry or, or a piece of furniture that may have some precious metal in it. So that's a, that's a concern. And then the other concern, you know, it's funny that a nine or 10-year-old kid is going to go trade in their games that they've been holding, that, you know, they're not going to have a driver's license, so mom and dad are going to go in there with them with their, their games, and we're going to take pictures for them to be able to sell their games to, maybe not trade in, but to go do something else. So that, it, it's almost like throwing the baby out with the bathwater.
Well, I appreciate the examples. I'll, I'll give you a couple of additional ones. It's not unusual for people to burglarize homes and grab handfuls of compact discs or movies or video games that are worth thousands of dollars. And they're sold for pennies on the dollar, because there's no way to do anything with recording or reporting any of that information. And then back to the, the example, Mr. McFarland, with the antique dealers. That's one of the reasons that the exemptions were as broad as they were, so that, you know, if you have costume jewelry, if you have furniture, that whole litany of things that Mr. Tucker mentioned earlier, all of those are exempted, because they're not items that are typically stolen in thefts or burglaries. And so we didn't feel the need to try and regulate any recording or reporting of those items, for that very reason.
Other questions, comments? Let me ask, is a secondhand dealer permit required now?
No.
This, this is an additional permit which would be issued at the time of the business license?
Yeah, we have, you could have a business license without having a secondhand dealer permit, but if you were, because oftentimes those businesses would do multiple things. And it could be dealing with goods that are not subject to this ordinance and then decide, "Okay, I want to add going into the type of sporting goods that are covered by it." At that point, they would need to get it.
And, and that would not have any cost, the secondhand dealer permit?
It has a, I think it's a one, it's a one-time $50 fee.
Okay. In addition to the business license? And then I've heard word of something, maybe an intermediate step before we go to requiring Leads Online, as to a merchants' watch, where you provided a list, perhaps, to secondhand dealers who receive these permits, who could receive from you the reports, I don't know about confidentiality or anything else, but reports of losses or stolen property during the previous day, the previous 24 hours, the previous 48 hours. Has there been any consideration of that?
Well, we looked at that and, because that was presented during some of the stakeholder meetings. There's two issues, I think, respectfully, Mayor. One is, you know, the businesses that are buying and selling secondhand goods are the ones that are profiting from the purchase and sale of those items. And respectfully, we need their assistance to help us track that information and make sure that it's being handled as, as well as it can be. If, if those businesses are the ones that are profiting from the sale of that, then we feel it's reasonable to ask them to bear some of the responsibility for identifying those items, for recording the information from that, and for reporting it. The other piece with the merchants' watch, as I understand it, it's more of a locally-driven type of information exchange, where the local law enforcement would push information out to local businesses who wanted to participate. And then local businesses would have that information available to them to help them screen purchases or items that perhaps presented at their point-of-sale counter for some type of a transaction. I would like to think, and I would hope, that all the businesses that would be in, in our jurisdiction would be great corporate citizens and would call timely if they saw anything that was of concern. If that were the case, then locally at least, we'd have a handle on that problem. The problem is, as we said earlier, this is not a one-jurisdictional issue. People that steal items are apt to take them out of county, out of the city, out of the state. And if we have some national mechanism to track that, very similar to what we do with the National Crime Information Center, then we've got a national registry that we can depend on.
What about a break-in period where, obviously, I think some of them are a little concerned about this Leads Online, if, and I don't see any time periods as updates, et cetera, et cetera. And so you started by hierarchy. Here are the things we're having the most trouble with, and you pick an item, or you pick two items. And here, and, and you've got to get those online as the priority, first priority. And then say you've got six months, and you enter the second level of items that you've got to register. So you have a break-in period, so it's not such a all-at-once kind of a system. Is there, is there a way that you might work with the stakeholders to, to try to transition? Because I think the fear is this administrative time. All of us who've ever been in sales like to sell. Some of us who are in sales lost our job because we did more paperwork than selling, and so there's that dichotomy. But is that an option that you might be willing to maybe pursue? And again, Mr. Young is suggesting deferral. There's still a lot of questions. We haven't got a complete answer yet. So I'm wondering if that's something that we could possibly work through with the Leads Online?
I wouldn't discount that as, as not a possibility, Mayor. One of the things that I would say is, if you're investigating the theft of stolen property, or the, trying to identify, that time is of the essence often, because it moves quickly. It's disposed of quickly. Pawnbrokers are required to report within 48 hours of the transaction. So, you know, whether or not some type of a hierarchical review, if you will, of what has to be reported, when, is something that would impede investigations and, and create more of a problem, really, than, than perhaps we're thinking about here, it's hard to say. But I think certainly we want to end up with a, a process... But I think certainly we want to end up with a process that is not overly cumbersome, but that also helps us identify these items of property and the persons that are responsible for stealing them.
Any other questions, comments?
Chief, having been a small business owner, and kind of saw what takes place when people come in and they've got a secondhand item that they want to sell, of course, my policy was, we don't buy anything off the street, which kind of resolved that issue. But when they came in, generally, they might have something other than what was stolen. So let's say you're looking for a stolen watch, and a stolen necklace, and a stolen ring. When the person would come and see me, oftentimes what they had was scrap gold, or scrap silver, or a gemstone, which would never indicate that it had an original usage, and of course, there's no identifying mark to gold, I mean, other than, you know, gold is gold, and I mean, and of course, I would convey this over to the air-conditioned thefts that we've recently had, where copper's being taken, and it's being stolen as one thing and being sold as another. What is, how does this system adjust for that, or what's in place to compensate for it?
Well, one of the things that's interesting, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Smotherman, one of the things that's interesting is, let's say that you have a seller who presents at a business that's recording and reporting using this technology, and on a certain day they present, and they have five video games, or they've got some scrap metal of some sort or other. What's captured in that data entry is not only what it was that they tried to transact on the date of that transaction, but also the information that identifies them. And remember, if you recall from the video, once that person's identified as being a seller, then you don't have to reload their information again, it's captured in the system. But from an investigative standpoint, one of the tools that's very useful is, what if tomorrow that same person comes back and they've got 10 CDs, or 10 video games? Or they come back the next day, or go to another location, where the system recognizes their name and identifying information, and they're trying to sell something else? All of those things could have been the proceeds, or the stolen merchandise, if you will, from one home burglary. And if they're smart about it, they're not going to sell them all at one place, or all at the same time. If they're in that system, regardless, Mr. Smotherman, of where they're in that system, it's easy, if the seller is John Jones, that lives at 123 Main Street, and John Jones starts popping up at two or three different locations, then the investigator's got something to work with, he's got a trail to follow. And frankly, that's information we don't have right now, unless those are pawn transactions. And one of the things that's happened, I think, with the implementation of this system through the pawn network is, it's driven some of that, perhaps underground, or to other locations, where they don't have those reporting and recording requirements. We've created a loophole.
Do you know if, say, Smyrna or Woodbury would have this reporting system in place?
I know Smyrna does, I'm not sure about Woodbury, but my understanding is all the law enforcement, well, the city of Smyrna?
Right.
I don't know about that, I know Smyrna Police uses it, all the law enforcement agencies in the county use it, and my belief would be that the pawn brokers throughout Rutherford County are already using it.
I don't think Smyrna does, at least the people I talked to yesterday said that they didn't report.
Their pawn brokers aren't reporting?
Not pawn brokers, but secondhand businesses.
No, sir, I don't believe any of the secondhand businesses anywhere in the county have it, at this point.
So currently, if you were to carry it outside city limits and sell it, there wouldn't be any record of it anyways? If, and certainly, there's no verification, if you were to decide, okay, I can't sell it in Murfreesboro, what would prevent the person from selling it on eBay?
Hopefully, a wary buyer, but other than that, Mr. Smotherman, I don't know that anything would.
Mr. Young?
If I have additional questions, or stakeholders have additional questions, who is our best contact person? Is that going to be Mr. Tucker, or is that going to be one of your people?
If there are legal questions regarding the language that's in the ordinance, Mr. Tucker is probably the best reference there. If they are questions regarding the criminal investigation side of that, Captain Nathan McDaniel has been our point of contact in criminal investigations, he can be reached at 893-2717, he's here tonight.
Has he been involved in the stakeholder meetings?
He has.
So they're familiar with him?
From the start.
Outstanding.
And certainly, anybody can call me as well.
I'll second the motion for defer.
All right, Mr. Young made a motion to defer, and there's a second. I think the council obviously would like to help the police department, I think the police department is being very reasonable and prudent in trying to bring this forward. I think there's just some questions that need to be answered, and to the people who are in this business, I know this has been going on for some time, certainly the first meeting was in March, this is December. I would hope that you would be patient and persistent, let me put it that way, that you would not give up on this ordinance, or leave it to chance, that you would try to work with us in trying to make a system where we can protect our residents and their property, not only from you losing money in your business, because you purchased something that belonged to somebody else, that they got, they got to get it out of your store, but so that we could possibly hold down the incidents of what we have, and increase our investigative ability. So I'll ask Ms. Wright to call right now for the vote on this, Mr. Lyons?
Yeah, just want to make sure we have a little bit of clarification about the deferral. My suggestion would be, while it's fresh on everyone's minds, the council's minds, the businesses who are here, if over the next two weeks, if they could submit those questions, comments, and concerns to Chief Christman, or to the mayor, we'll be glad to take those as a staff, look at them, try to prepare some answers, and then come back after the first of the year and decide whether we want to have another stakeholder meeting, or place it on the council agenda. I just want to have some clear definitions, so we know what happens next.
Well, I feel like the stakeholders probably have got their questions already, it might be a good idea just to go ahead and plan at least one more stakeholder meeting within the next 30 days, if that's at all possible, I know with the holidays, et cetera.
And Mayor, these people are businessmen, and this is the time of year that it's hardest on them, I wouldn't think that doing this in mid-January would be a problem.
So you want to think maybe about a 60-day deferral?
Okay.
Would that be all right?
Yes, I just want to make sure we all know what happens next.
And also, let's get some as Of dates, and try to figure out what the most pressing issues we want to try to resolve are, as to what those items are that can be most helpful in this particular thing, and maybe have some dates that we could start to include if we did determine to go into use this system, what items we want to get started to. And again, I understand the public wants their items back, their property back, so from that point of view, I really want to thank you for the work that you've done, and I know this is something that's lingered for a long time, so let's see if we can't work it out, to where our secondhand dealers will help us, and you'll get the information that you need.
And Mayor, for the secondhand dealers, you've all emailed and called, I know we all have gotten several different correspondence, emails, and phone calls over the last week, so thank you for all your input.
And now's the time to...
Stay with it.
Stay with it, and let's get these questions answered, because I don't know all the questions, and I certainly can't answer them if I don't know all the questions, but this is an opportunity, we slowed the train down, we need to make sure that everybody's on it.
Okay. Ms. Wright, if you have a call to roll on the deferral, 60 days.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you, Chief, Mr. Tucker, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll go back to our agenda, which would be item number seven, which is pursuant to a resolution. And by the way, those of you who are here for that secondhand dealer, you're free to go, free to stay, so I don't expect that you'll want to stay and go through the other items that we've got, but if you're welcome to do that, and leadership Rutherford, you're probably not off the hook yet, but...
They've got five more minutes.
Yeah, five more minutes, okay. So thank you all. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on November 7, 2013, conduct a public hearing to consider zoning approximately 179.24 acres as Highway Commercial CH District, approximately 87.71 acres as General Office OG District, and approximately 34.98 acres as Residential Multifamily 16, RM16 District, located along New Salem Highway and Veterans Parkway, simultaneous with annexation, and rezone approximately 3.12 acres located along Armstrong Valley Road from Single Family Residential 15, RS15 District to Highway Commercial District. Mr. Bill Rowland, on behalf of the Rucker Donnell Foundation, is the applicant notice of the said public hearing, was published in the November 17, 2013 issue of the local newspaper. Ms. Green, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. Good evening, Council. Our first public hearing this evening is to consider a zoning change request for property that's located along Highway 99, and along Veterans Parkway. This property is, the request is to zone some property simultaneous with its annexation, the annexation you considered for second reading today as a previous agenda item. The request also includes a rezoning of a small portion of property. So the request has changed from the initial, the zoning change request is a little bit different than what was initially made by the applicants after the planning commission studied the item. The request is to rezone 179.3 acres to CH, and that property is shaded in purple on the map before you. The request is also to zone approximately 87.7 acres to OG, simultaneous with its annexation, and that would be property shaded in the blue color on the map before you. And then, another part of the request is to zone approximately 34.98 acres, RM16, simultaneous with the annexation. As you know, CH is Commercial Highway District, and that allows various types of commercial uses, we typically see along a highway corridor, and that purple area is concentrated along the State Highway 99. OG is General Office District Residential, and it's a lower-intensity type zoning district, and allows office uses, but not the full spectrum of commercial uses that you would see in a CH District. And then the area requesting RM16 zone is in the dark orange color, and that's the 34.98 acres, and the RM16 zone would allow some institutional uses by right, would also allow various types of residential uses, including multifamily residential uses with a density of 16 dwelling units per acre. You can see that there's an area shaded yellow that's identified as interim RS15, or RS15 requested. Those properties will, do not have a companion zoning change request, so they're not a part of this application. They will come into the city with a default zoning of RS15, because they're zoned for residential and agricultural purposes in the county, so there's no need for there to be a separate request to change the zoning for those properties. But I just wanted to identify them to you on the map, so you wouldn't see the full spectrum of zoning for the properties that are being annexed. And then the last part of the request is to zone approximately 3.12 acres, which is currently already located in Murfreesboro city limits, and it's located at the intersection of Veterans Parkway and, I believe it's St. Andrews Drive, from its current RS15 zone, Single Family Residential District, to CH, Highway Commercial District. So this request is basically a four-part request, and Mayor, of course, read it well, which is to zone property to CH, OG, and RM16 simultaneous with its annexation, and to rezone approximately 3.12 acres from RS15 to CH. The planning commission did conduct a public hearing on October 2, to consider the initial request, which was to zone all the properties just to CH and RM16, and after that meeting, deferred action to study the item further, and then it came back to the planning commission later that month, and in its current form, the planning commission does recommend approval of this zoning change unanimously. Mr. Matt Taylor is representing the applicants, which are the Rucker Donnell Foundation, and Mr. Bill Rowland. Mr. Taylor has prepared a short presentation to go over the specifics of the property. If you have any questions about the site or the change request, I'll be glad to answer them, either before or after the public hearing. I'll go ahead and invite Mr. Taylor to the lectern.
Mayor Bragg, members of the council, Matt Taylor of SEC here in town, and I'm accompanied tonight by the trustees of the foundation, be it Mr. Bill Rowland, Mr. Rick Mansfield, and Mr. Kent Burklo. In addition to the trustees, I'm accompanied by Mr. John Harney of Parks Group, who's been assisting with the real estate side of the project. I do have a brief presentation on this request. I'd like to start by, Kent introducing you to the foundation, they're not as well-known as some of our other charitable organizations here in town, they've been around for quite some time. The Rucker Donnell Foundation is roughly a decade old, it was established by Mr. Donnell prior to his passing in 2003. Mr. Donnell established the organization, the foundation, with the sole purpose to operate exclusively for the benefit of charitable, educational, religious, scientific, and literary purposes. In an effort to set an example of what that is meant to mean, he did name a couple of named beneficiaries. One of those is the Salem United Methodist Church, located in our Rockville community, and the other is Martin Methodist College, located in Pulaski, Tennessee. Over this first decade, the foundation's been, kind of been a quiet period, they've gotten to know their named beneficiaries, they've made some in-kind donations to them, as well as assisted the church with some renovations. They've also participated with the city of Murfreesboro on Veterans Parkway, through some right-of-way donation, and then again, on the fire hall, through some land donation there. Now, the foundation's entering its second decade, they realize they need to be a little more aggressive, and have their only asset, that being the land, realize its full potential, so that they can have their full impact on the community, and that's why we're here tonight with this request. Property itself, as Ms. Ely said, is located to the west and south of the intersection of Veterans and Highway 99. Highway 99 and Veterans are a couple of our more active and newly-developed corridors in Murfreesboro. There's been a lot of single-family activity in this area, of, you know, such as Weston Park and Southern Meadows. It's also home to the large mixed-use development Three Rivers, and other non-single-family uses, such as the Publix and the Westbury Farms Apartments, located at St. Andrews Drive, just a short distance from here. Being at the intersection of Veterans and Salem, we have excellent access to roadway infrastructure, just a short distance, and timely access to Highway 96 and 840, as well as back over to 231 via Veterans Parkway, and then back into town proper on I-24 with Highway 99. The site itself has heavy tree cover to the north of Highway 99, and then you encounter that same heavy tree cover as you get towards the southern tips of the property along Thompson Road. The remainder of the site is mainly open field, that's been rocropped and farmed over the years. Most of the site does drain toward the west and north, where it enters Puckett Creek. A small portion of the site drains to the east, back into Armstrong Branch, before its confluence back into Puckett Creek. Being a newly-developed corridor, we do have access to nice utilities, we've got sewer located along Puckett Creek, we've got water lines located along Old Salem, New Salem, Veterans, and Thompson Road, and then we have electric located along each of those same routes as well. Even with all the good of the property, we do, as with any property, you've got some limitations. To the north of Highway 99, we've got a pretty extensive floodplain, that will limit the capability to develop that portion of the property. Inside of that floodplain, we've got a more restrictive area, the water quality protection area to protect that stream, and it's basically off-limits to development activity. On the south side, we do have a fairly significant existing pond there, we think that will, you can't move that pond or get rid of it, we've got to incorporate that into any sort of development plan. And in the southwest corner, we've got an existing borrow pit slash quarry, that due to its terrain, we think it will severely limit any potential development in that activity, in that area. And then at the very southern tips, we run back into very extreme slopes, as well as rock outcropping. To make any activity here, if not completely undeveloped, will severely limit the ability in this location. Alto, we've got over 100 acres of our request that will be hampered from its full development potential. The request itself, in a previous public hearing, I think it was actually in second reading tonight, was annexation of approximately 450 acres. Our request here tonight's for the rezoning of approximately 335 acres. As Ms. Ely said, it is a mixture of commercial highway, primarily located along Salem Highway, with large concentrations at your intersection with Veterans Parkway, as well as what we envision to be a larger tenant space, more toward Eagle Oil. From there, we are... From there, we are using OG or Office General zoning as a transitional zoning back into the property, and then another transitional zoning of RM 16 before we get back into the existing single-family farms. We base this request on our preliminary master plan. One of the first things we did with this property was to get to know it. We looked at topography, soils, property boundaries, access, and then we came and talked to Mr. Adalot after that. Once Mr. Adalot referred us to the Salem Land Use Plan, encouraged us to do some preliminary traffic planning, so we've tried to space our theoretical access points on, to allow future signal locations if the warrants and demands are ever there. We've laid out some, our major road networks inside the property. There could be other minor roads. These could shift slightly, but this is where we envision those to be, and that's what we based this zoning request on. And then being a foundation, instead of your typical developer, we felt it was right that we reached out to our neighbors before we made any formal application to the city. We did that back in late August at one of the city's local elementary schools. It was well-attended. I think we invited over 600 people, had about 60 participate, if I remember right, and had a lot of good dialogue back and forth. Some people didn't like the plan at all, others wanted tweaks, others just expressed appreciation for being invited. From that plan, we did make some changes. We listened to our neighbors. We took all the land that touched Old Salem Highway, we took that out of our request. There was some concern about the adequacy of that road, to be able to handle any intense development, and so we just removed that from the request. In addition, we told the people about these limitations, but we probably didn't define them very clearly in our initial presentation to them, so we went back and tried to really call those areas out, tell them what those limitations were, and why we felt like it was limiting factors. And then there was some question on the intentions of the foundations. They thought that these trustees would just take any profit from this and put it in their pocket, so we've tried to more clearly define that and lay out what will happen with this, how it will benefit the community, and why we're making these requests. And then, as Ms. Ely said, we made further changes after the Planning Commission's public hearing to more closely match our preliminary master plan, which most people seem to agree more readily with than our original zoning request. Myself or any of my other team members here will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Any questions for staff? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning request for roughly 335 acres, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak?
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, Council. My name is Jim Murray. I live at 5868 Montague Avenue. You know, I appreciate so much what the foundation is trying to do, and just sort of as a little bit of a recap, you know, back on the 2nd of October, the Planning Commission reviewed this initial request of 274 acres along Highway 99 to be zoned commercial highway. And in their discussion following this public hearing regarding this request, the members of the commission expressed some concern about the, a large amount of acreage requested to be rezoned CH, and they deferred further action on this until the applicant could submit a revised proposal. And then on the 10th, as you've heard, the Planning Commission reviewed the revised proposal and, which included a reduction in the amount of CH zoning from 274 acres down to the 179, currently under consideration. And noting this significant reduction of about 80, or over 95 acres, the commission voted to recommend approval of this revised proposal to council. And while I appreciate the reduction in the CH zoning and the inclusion of other zoning classifications in the revised request, I'm still concerned that the plan before council allows and promotes commercial highway-type developments for about a mile along the north side of Highway 99, and about a mile and a half in a continuous strip along the south side of Highway 99. Now, several years ago, the Murfreesboro City Council authorized the Salem Pipe Land Use Study, and this study was subsequently adopted by the Planning Commission. And in the plan's chapter on community development goals and objectives, the first objective under goal number one is to quote, to cluster, to cluster commercial uses within activity nodes as opposed to strip development. And the plan identifies commercial development in and around Highway 99, Veterans Parkway intersection, and mixed land use development west and south of that intersection. The plan also recommends that development along Highway 99 provide a gradual transition from rural to urban land uses. And although the applicant has a preliminary master plan for development of this Highway 99 corridor, the CH zoning in this strip along both sides of the highway allows almost any commercial development of the property. And therefore, I'm asking that the council vote to deny this request as it does not fit within the goals, objectives, and guidelines of the Salem Land Use Study.
Thank you. Thank you. Others wishing to speak? Anyone else? Last chance, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to zone an area located along New Salem Highway and Veterans Parkway to Highway Commercial, CH District, General Office, OG District, and Residential Multifamily 16, RM 16 District simultaneous with annexation, and to rezone an area located along Armstrong Valley Road to Highway Commercial, CH District.
Ms. Green, I have a question. Please. Now, my understanding is some of this commercial highway will never be able to be used, but it's still commercial highway?
There's a significant part of the property that is zoned CH, which has limitations on it. Those limitations that Mr. Taylor pointed out, such as the drainage or the, or the rock quarry, whatever they're calling that. I think they estimate about 25% of the property, because of its conditions, would be difficult to develop, although the CH zoning, if it could be developed, would allow those types of dis, zones, uses that you see along a commercial corridor.
Thank you.
Ms. Green, through this area right now, this is a two-lane highway, is that correct?
It is.
Do you have any idea what the forecast might be for the widening of Salem out that direction?
It's much desired by us, and I think actions have been taken by city officials to try to put that on a higher priority list with TDOT, but I don't think that this portion will be improved within the next five years. I think that's realistic estimation, and I know Mr. Lyons was a little bit more involved in this than I was.
We all understand, you know, some of the state projects do take some time to ramp up. First section is going to be on Highway 99 from Old Fort Parkway to Kason Lane, so this section will be down the timeline some bit.
Ms. Green, also, I'm, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, like most areas right now, you know, it's hard to look back at a study and say who forecasted what would be taking place at this time. And with the growth of Murfreesboro, it sometimes seems we build the road, and people ask why we build the road so wide, because there's nothing there, and in this case, it seems like we're getting the, the request before the road gets widened, but certainly it's a main corridor in and out of Murfreesboro, and I certainly understand why the request is being made, so.
Well, and traffic is already there, I mean, for the most part. Probably not because of this particular development going to add anything immediate, you know, maybe it's a three-to-five-year timeframe.
Right, and that was the reason of asking the question. I don't think this is going to be developed in the next six months, and therefore, I think if, if we do have the road prioritized, and certainly put emphasis with the state to go ahead and get that process started, I mean, this is certainly one of the corridors in and out of Murfreesboro, that the sooner the better, and I think that if we can, if we can get the, well, I'll say that there's nothing better if you have a business located, especially a commercial business, than to have traffic. And, and the traffic is there, so certainly, you know, I wouldn't want to put a residence along this corridor right now because the, the increase in the traffic flow and everything that's already there, it's not a road that you'd want to be backing out into, or accessing or regressing into, so. I kind of think it's, whether it's early or not, I mean, it's certainly something that will ultimately be done, I think, so. And I like the plan, I mean, as far as the, the land use, it looks like it's appropriate to me, so.
Set in the form of a motion.
I will put it in the form of a motion. I approve, we accept as recommended.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Young, seconds. So we're voting now. First reading to zone this property, as it's been shown, please call the roll. That's right.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on November 7, 2013, will conduct a public hearing to consider amending Appendix A zoning, creating a new mixed-use MU district. Planning staff is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the November 17, 2013 issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, sir. The next public hearing is the beginning of a series of public hearings, which are all very much related to each other, and they all deal with changes to properties that are located within our Gateway Design Overlay District zone. The first of these public hearings is to consider the city adopting a brand-new, brand-new zoning district called the Mixed Use District, with an MU as its abbreviation. This Mixed Use District, like as I mentioned, will be a brand-new district that doesn't currently exist in the city of Murfreesboro, and we have proposed to use some amendments to the zoning ordinance, which would allow this district to be created, and then would also give some standards to this district that you would norm, that we would have in our zoning ordinance. The changes, and I'll go over them point by point, but quickly, and if you have questions, I would very much like to answer them, myself and Mr. Adalot, but the first change is to change zoning ordinance to create this district, to create the name for this district and add it to our city. The second change is to add a purpose for the, for this district in Section 21, and I'd just like to read the first half of the paragraph for the purpose. And the purpose of this proposed Mixed Use District is to provide a zoning category that allows a mixture of land uses, both vertical and horizontal, including multiple family dwellings and other housing institutions and commercial uses. It is intended that the Mixed Use District be allowed only for lands located within a Gateway Design Overlay District, or within other overlay districts with similar purpose and intent. The third paragraph makes provisions in Section 27 of our zoning ordinance to define the landscaping and screening for the Mixed Use District. The fourth paragraph deletes in its entirety Section 24, Article 2, the Battlefield Protection Overlay District. We call that BPD for short. The Battlefield Protection Overlay District was created in 1994, 10 years prior to the creation and adoption of the Gateway Design Overlay District. When the GDO regulations were drafted, all the provisions of the Battlefield Protection Overlay District were included within the GDO standards, and it was intended that after the adoption of the GDO regulations, that the zoning ordinance would be amended to remove the Battlefield Protection Overlay Districts because they no longer had any purpose. So all the standards that are in that BPD district are within the GDO district. Since that time, the regulations have been found to be a source of confusion for each project that lies in both the Battlefield Protection District and the Gateway Design Overlay District. Staff is proposing to completely eliminate the BP District, BPD District, because it has no purpose that is not achieved by the GDO district. The fifth and sixth paragraphs propose to establish buffering requirements for the MU district, and we have modeled those after the CH and CF zones. The seventh paragraph makes provisions for the MU district to be located in our Uses Permitted chart, so it outlines the types of uses that would be allowed in the MU district, and there's a chart in the materials that you have that show those uses that would be permitted. In that chart, if there's an X located next to the use, that means the use is permitted by right. If there's an S, then that use is permitted, subject to the issuance of a special use permit from the Board of Zoning Appeals, and if there's no symbol at all, if it's blank, then that means that that use is not permitted at all within that MU district. It may be noteworthy for you to notice that single-family, two-family, three-family, and four-family dwellings are not permitted in the Mixed Use District. Only multi, multiple-family dwellings are the, the only type of residential uses permitted. The proposed uses include most, most of the institutional uses, and most, but not all of the same commercial uses permitted in both the CH and CF district. Most of the industrial uses are not permitted. The eighth and ninth section makes provisions for minimum lot yard requirements, and there's a chart that demonstrates the minimum lot standards. When initially reviewed, staff had studied the possibility of multiple-family lots having a minimum lot size of nine acres, commercial lots a minimum lot size of 1.5 acres, and mixed use to have 4.5 acres as a minimum size. That was not a well-received standard, and after communicating with many of the stakeholders and people interested in the property, it was revised before coming before you, so that the minimum lot requirements now only apply to multiple-family dwellings, and that's been revised to five acres. So the Planning Commission is recommending that the minimum lot requirements apply only to multiple-family dwellings with a minimum of five acres, and if there be no minimum lot requirements for commercial uses or mixed uses. So that's something that's changed from the initial review of this ordinance. We have, of course, reached out to folks in our community to receive what input they may have, to see if there's any way we can improve, improve these standards for the Mixed Use District. I put out personally 24 signs. We advertised both the public hearings and neighborhood meetings on the city TV, and I know that we had at least two spots on our cable TV. We also prepared a press release and sent that out to various news outlets, and we also created a brochure, which we handed out to folks to give them some bullet points about the changes that were going on, because there are many questions that people had about what this Mixed Use District is. So we've attempted to reach out to stakeholders and get their input. This process has been somewhat of a long process, but after hearing our, our first presentation this evening, I guess it doesn't seem so long. We initially presented this to Planning Commission in June, asked them what they thought about it, and if we should proceed, and they believe the changes seemed pertinent, and they seemed like this was a good time to do it, and asked us to move forward with reaching out to the community and then holding the public hearings. So I know that we've been actively pursuing, researching these, and coming up with a solution since this summer. Most of the areas that the later public hearings will be to zone to Mixed Use District are currently zoned Office General or Light Industrial. Those uses don't seem to be the best uses in our gateway. Office General is a light-intensity type commercial use, and many, much of the development that you see in the gateway now would not be permitted in OG, and we actually haven't seen much movement in the zones that are zoned OG. And then Light Industrial is a district that is best suited for, of course, more industrial types uses, and not really so appropriate in some of these areas. So later, you'll be asked to consider, if you do decide to adopt the Mixed Use District, changing the zoning for a couple, a couple maps, a couple of public hearings to Mixed Use District, and they, that's how they fit into the puzzle. If there are any questions about this, myself or Mr. Adalot, who's worked very hard on these, would be glad to answer them. You should conduct a public hearing prior to making your final decision about the zoning, or the adoption of this new Mixed Use District. It is coming to you with a recommendation from all the members of the Planning Commission that you do recommend approval of this change, and again, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Questions for Ms. Green? If there are no questions, I'll open the public hearing. At this time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this amendment to our Appendix A zoning, which would create a new Mixed Use MU district, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Hello, Council. It's good to see you again. My name is Jeff Rainwater. I live at 1030 Brinkston Run. So, speaking a little bit about the, the M, the Mixed Use, and some concerns that I have about Mixed Use in general, and about the rezoning of such a large portion of one of the most important sections of our city to a Mixed Use. Right now, we have, you know, zonings of commercial and residential. One thing that it seems like to me that Mixed Use is doing is it's kind of taking away the... like to me that mixed-use is doing is it's kind of taking away the council's ability to decide where we need to go with the, the land use. It makes it almost a free-for-all. You can do whatever you want, unless you want to build townhouses or single-family dwellings. So, it does, it does take away the ones that are RM16 away from, a little bit away from them, so they can't build single-family dwellings or townhouse-type developments. This is one thing I'm concerned about. The other thing is, it opens up a whole area to being used for multifamily dwellings. It opens up a whole area, most of it's commercial anyway. I agree, light industrial's probably not appropriate for a lot of that area. I think we all know that. But, I really want us to think more about, you know, the, the planning of that area, and when you throw it out as a mixed-use, you're just taking a big swipe at it and say, "Go do what you want," you know, when we're really going to think about, you know, is this appropriate for commercial in a certain area, office general in certain areas. I am concerned about things not being areas that have been office general, being removed from office general and put into the arena of probably retail-type developments, commercial-type developments. I believe, you know, if we think back, you know, a lot of that office general was along the lines of, "We would like to recruit businesses that are more corporate-related into the city of Murfreesboro," which we haven't been able to do, unfortunately. So, so when we look at, you know, when we take, when we bring in a new zoning like this with an area like this, I think it's very important that we think about how that plays into the purpose of this, this part of the town that was set aside, and the city built a nice highway through it, or a boulevard, and done a lot of work around that, even across into the Fortress area. I don't know if any of this zoning goes over there quite to it, but, but, you know, it, it seems like to me that unless, you know, it pretty much opens up you to do whatever you want, unless you want to, I think, sell ice or packaged beer, just about, which was kind of an odd one, I thought, I saw on there. So, when you look at this, you know, this is one thing where we've given a lot of lip service to comprehensive planning in our city. We haven't really done it yet. We haven't gone down that road, since the city has grown to the size anywhere near it is today. We've done a land use study in Blackman. We've done a land use study, and that was many, many years ago. We've done a land use study for the 99 corridor. We haven't thought about how all this comes together, and what parts of the city should be allowed to be used for what pieces. And before we take just a big swipe across the board and say, "You know what? Let's just make all this mixed-use and go do whatever," which means it could all wind up being retail without any leftover for offices or anything like that, maybe we need to think about, you know, what, what these areas should be used for, and what is the appropriate zoning for those. You know, just a few minutes ago, you know, the annexation of a large part on Highway 99, that also goes into, you know, let's plan this out a little better before we, you know, think about what goes there. That's probably the right thing you did there, and I'm not even opposed to the apartments necessarily there, which I'm sure you're surprised about, because there's not that many in that area. Now, you put through more there, I might have to say something, but, but overall, my biggest concern there is, it opens up, it takes away the, a lot of the power of the, the elected officials, and puts it in the hands of the bureaucrat officials in plan design, and those aren't the people we directly elected and we have the most influence on. The, the closer they are to the citizen, the better off I think the city is, as far as when those final decisions get made on what we can and can't use. I'm not saying that they don't do a good job, but I'm also saying, we didn't elect those, and we don't hold those people accountable as we do, and they don't get the, necessarily as long emails as you get from me, probably. So, that's, that's the concern I have there. You know, this is a very important issue, I think, with our city, and I think we should undertake a comprehensive planning study before we go and just wipe a big section over to a brand-new multi-use. It could be problematic when you think about it, because, you know, we've had one built already that has been empty for a few years, or half-empty or more, in a mixed-use retail and condo development, that are, over half the condos are still unsold, and most of the retail is not filled up either, and it's been there for several years now. You look at what's going on in, like, the city of Brentwood, where there have citizens and almost upheaval over mixed-use, where they're adamantly against it. You know, before we go down that road, let's think about what we really should do, you know, as a city, what we should set aside, you know. Someday, I hope we land that corporate office, and I hope we have a place for it. I'd love to work in Murfreesboro someday. Quit letting Williams and Gally take our talent. So, but, we need that, that thought out and set aside for those areas. You know, we have Joby Jackson Parkway for, you know, heavy industry. Well, let's think about where else we need to have that, and just doing a big swipe before we decide where we really should go with all of that, and think about how, what our city looks like in 20 years, 10 years, five years, 20 years, and so forth, and what we leave for our kids in a very good, well, city that's probably, you know, 200,000 residents or more at that point. You know, let's, let's, let's be very careful there before we just jump on this. And I know it's been going on for quite a while, but we still haven't done that, that what I consider a prerequisite study. So, anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Anyone else? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending Appendix A zoning, creating a new mixed-use MU district.
Mayor, I think staff and the Planning Commission have been looking at this for a long time. I know eight or 10 months, maybe a year, off and on. We've had some growing problems with some of our zoning in this area, and this is a improvement to enhance the development in our prized area. I think this is going to make it easier for the people that want to put businesses in there. I think it's going to make it easier for people that want to put office and medical in this area. I think that it's been looked at. We've looked at the most important things of, of any project, which are traffic and landscaping and egress and entrances, and all of the lighting, and all the things that go in any quality development. I don't think this is too soon. I, I, I think we need to move on this, because every day, that corporate headquarters may come in here tomorrow, or may be looking to come in here tomorrow, and if we don't have a better plan than we had before, it might inhibit that. I think staff has, has done a good job. I think they have given the Planning Commission the pertinent information, and I think the Planning Commission has studied it. They're not the governing body. This body is the one that makes the final decision, and that's where it should be. But, the Planning Commission is used as a tool by the city and, and staff to answer all the questions and beat out all the solutions, and, and make what we do better, and then we bring it to this body. So, so Mayor, I'm, we're bringing this to this body. I think it's, it's, it's well-thought-out, it's well-thought-out, and it's time to do it. So, I move for approval.
Mr. Young?
Mr. McFarland.
My question, I guess this would go to Mr. Lyons with your gateway background, but, you know, in, in the gateway area, when we originally set that up, we had certain benchmarks that we said, "Okay, we're not going to allow X number of all medical." You know, "We're not going to allow X number of all office space." So, we had benchmarks where we actually said, "Okay, this land can't be, you can't do X, Y, and Z on there." So, is that changing that?
Well, I think you really have to step back and look at the whole area. You've got four Gateway Design Overlay Districts.
Right.
That was really in recognition that Thompson Lane had already seen certain development, and we heard while we were developing those regulations that the businesses were concerned that if they wanted to expand, that it would be problematic for them. So, you've got that Gateway Design Overlay District along Thompson Lane that recognizes the, the development that had already occurred at that point. You've also got Gateway Design Overlay District Number Three, which was the property owned by the city. The boundary of that was the city-owned property. Now, when you talk about kind of the limitations or the mix of uses that were there, because the city was the landowner, we certainly had a certain amount of control about who we sold the land to. That amount of control about, you know, pacing, who and where, really just relied on zoning in those other districts. It was only the city-owned property that we really had to say is, as the seller. But, I think as staff's taken a look at this and had experience, you know, when the, all of the GDO districts, we've recognized that, you know, we kind of needed to bring things up to date, and I think that's what we've attempted to do.
So, with these recommendations, prior landowners, were that, they may have been regulated on putting more medical, or this, that sort of, this will take that place?
Well, I think it, it, it gives another opportunity to, to bring development forward in a manner that's consistent with what we're seeing out in the marketplace right now. That mixed-use development has, you know, become very common. You could look at districts like the Gulch, where you've got retail, residential, employment, all mixed, mixed in together. That's a very common way that we're, we're seeing folks come forward.
Other questions?
Yes. I attended the public presentation that Mr. Adelott did out at the, where did we do that? At the Chamber of Commerce building, and it was very well-attended, and, and truly, I think there were some very good questions and good points brought out during that meeting. I do think that the audience at the end of the meeting seemed to be very receptive of the idea. Certainly, we're 10 years into the Gateway Project now, and, and certainly, I'm sure things have changed, and we've learned a lot in that time period as to the usage. I do think that we're certainly slowing down the progress by some of the restrictions that we currently have on it. I mean, there, I know there was one building the other day that somebody was talking about that couldn't build because currently the zoning would prevent the building from being built, because the building would have been too large, where with this new zoning, that it will now be appropriate. And, and certainly to Mr. Rainwater's concerns, we are doing what we can to promote and encourage any corporate headquarters that would like to come to Murfreesboro to come on down. We, we did land one here a couple weeks ago with Swine Cosmetics, and certainly they'll be welcome to our community, and their investment will be very large. But, so, so we're not turning away any white-collar jobs, I'll assure you. But, as far as this particular request, it does seem to be appropriate in those who have vested interest, as well as those who are just going to benefit from the growth of this area and the development of this area. I, I think now's a good time for us to go ahead and certainly appreciate all of the Planning Commission's efforts that they put forth to try and come up with a, what I consider a presentable plan.
You did. Mr. Young made a motion. Is there a second then? Mr. McFarland, seconds. Any questions regarding this amendment, what we're voting on? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on November 7th, 2013, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 16.1 acres from Highway Commercial CH District to mixed-use MU District, approximately 229.6 acres from Light Industrial LI District to mixed-use MU District, and approximately 2.32 acres from Heavy Industrial HI District to mixed-use MU District located along Medical Center Parkway east of Thompson Lane. Planning staff is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the November 17th, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green, you may proceed.
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is for you to consider a zoning map amendment to zone some properties in Murfreesboro to the newly-created mixed-use district, or the MU district. The properties are located, as Mayor Bragg described, and on the map there shown before you. All three areas that are shaded colors, purple, orange, and blue, are part of this zoning map change request. The area shaded purple is currently zoned CH, and that's Highway Commercial District, and their request, of course, is to change that to MU mixed-use district. The largest portion of this map is colored orange, and that is for properties that are currently zoned Light Industrial District, and the proposed change is to change the zoning of the Light Industrial District to mixed-use district. And the third part of this request is to zone a smaller portion of property, which is shaded blue, and currently zoned Heavy Industrial District, from Heavy Industrial District to mixed-use district. These properties are located, are all the properties located along Gateway Boulevard, some located along Medical Center Parkway, Williams Drive, and Garrison Drive, and a few that are on Gateway Boulevard. We have reached out to the property owners, and none of the property owners included in this map have requested to be removed from the zoning change request, and it's my impression, but that they are in favor of this zoning change request. If approved, this would be the first area Murfreesboro zoned MU mixed-use district. If there are any questions about the zoning change, I'll be glad to answer them. Planning Commission is recommending to you that you do zone these properties MU as requested.
All right. Is there questions for Ms. Green before I open the public hearing?
Two corporate headquarters sites, as part of our gateway project, would be included in this.
And where are they?
They'd be the, if you could pull the map up with the orange, blue, and purple. There you go. Ms. Green can get them with the pointer. One of them is there east of the pond, and then the one south of Medical Center Parkway overlooks the golf course, right there in the curve of Medical Center Parkway.
And then the purple is ours, also purple and down to...
Yes, sir.
All that up?
I might add that these properties are remaining in, in the Gateway Design Overlay District. I didn't mention that, but that overlay will remain on all these properties. So, the base zoning is what's changing. The base zoning of CH, LI, and HI is changing to mixed-use. They're remaining in the gateway, and so they'll go through that review process as well.
And this light blue, heavy industrial, is that, that's not in the gateway now, is that correct?
I believe it is.
It is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Any questions then, before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning along Medical Center Parkway, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak? Anyone at all? Last chance. Then I'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading, an ordinance to rezone an area located along Medical Center Parkway east of Thompson Lane to a mixed-use district MU. Ms. McFarland?
Mayor, I'll make a motion, but, Mr. Lyons, if you wouldn't mind making a note, just because it jogged my memory, but, is the curve on Gateway Boulevard and Medical Center, if we could have traffic look at that, that intersection has gotten, proven to be tough there on that, with the, some of the little trees.
Okay. Site distance?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
Yep.
Is there, had a motion?
That's a motion.
A motion that we rezoned. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on November 7th, 2013, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 24.7 acres from Single-Family Residential 15, RS15 District to mixed-use MU District, approximately 55.1 acres from Highway Commercial CH District to mixed-use district, approximately 102.5 acres from General Office OG District to mixed-use MU District, and approximately 23.16 acres from Residential Multifamily 16, RM16 District to mixed-use district located along Medical Center Parkway west of Thompson Lane. Planning staff is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the November 17th, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green, you may proceed.
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is another zoning map amendment to zone properties to the mixed-use district in the city of Murfreesboro. These properties are located both along the north and south side of Medical Center Parkway, along Robert Rose Drive, and along the southern portion, or of the parcels located along Wilkinson Pike. You can see that the current zoning for these properties varies. The majority of the properties are zoned OG, which is Office General District, and I alluded to that earlier, and the request is to change the zoning of these properties from OG to mixed-use district. The second-largest district located in this property The second-largest district located in this property is Zone CH, Highway Commercial District, and that area is shaded purple on the map before you, and the request again is to zone those to MU Mixed Use District. Also, there's a portion of property that's zoned RM-16, and that's shaded in the orange color, and that has been included as well as a request to be zoned to Mixed Use District. And then there's a smaller portion of RS-15, which is located along Medical Center Parkway, on the north side of Medical Center Parkway, and along the south side of the buffer along Wilkinson Pike. Those colors are yellow, currently zoned RM-15, and proposed to be zoned MU Mixed Use District. You can see that there's a rectangular wedge not included in this along Robert Rose Drive, and that property is zoned PUD. That is the Lifestyle Centers that currently is under construction, and I believe would have benefited from the zoning request had it been created prior to them moving forward with their development, as that is a multifamily development which also has a restaurant component in the multifamily development which is open to public. So that's an example of a mixed-use development along Robert Rose Drive. So it is the Planning Commission's recommendation to you that you do zone these properties to Mixed Use District. At the night of the public hearing, and I'm going to second map, which you can see the difference is the hatched purple area that has the words Smythe on them. Mr. Smythe showed up to the public hearings and was not interested in having his property zoned to Mixed Use at this time, stated that he felt most comfortable with its current zoning and would rather wait to have any zoning change on the property. So that was removed, and so the zoning request in the ordinance map that you have does not include Mr. Smythe's property. So the request tonight does not include the property of the one property owner who came to speak and asked to be removed from the zoning change request. Otherwise, I believe the property owners are in favor of the zoning change request, and again, Planning Commission did recommend this unanimously the night of the public hearing.
So the Smythe property is only that crosshatched which circles Robert Rose there, or is in that curve?
Yes, sir. That's the same.
But not the area to the north of it?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing. At this time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. At this time, we will consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Medical Center Parkway west of Thompson Lane to Mixed Use MU District. Thank you, Mr. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Smotherman, thank you. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time, we'll hear from the Planning Director with regards to designating the Planning Commission as the Design Review Commission. Mr. Aitlott, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. In October of this year, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing to consider comprehensive amendments to the zoned ordinance, Section 24, Article 3, Gateway, GDO Gateway Overlay, Gateway Design Overlay District. These amendments were proposed by staff to improve the functionality of the regulations and to make them more user-friendly, and that will be the subject of your next public hearing after this matter is concluded. The GDO regulations have been in place since early 2004, and the Planning Commission, the staff, property owners, and the design community have now had significant experience in applying them. After the public hearings, the Planning Commission took action to recommend approval of the amendments to the City Council, and those amendments will be considered later. As the city's legal department prepared the actual ordinance to amend Section 24, Article 3, the Gateway Design Overlay District, it brought to the attention of the planning staff that in 2008, subsequent to the city's adoption of the GDO regulations, the state legislature passed enabling legislation to allow a municipality to create a Design Review Commission, a DRC, to develop design guidelines for exterior appearance of non-residential property, multiple-family residential property, and entrances into non-residential development. The legislation also allows municipality to designate the Planning Commission as the DRC. It appears that with the comprehensive amendments to the GDO, it would be an appropriate time for the City Council to formally designate the Murfreesboro Planning Commission as the city's Design Review Commission. Accordingly, we have an ordinance for your consideration tonight to do that. Last night, the Planning Commission considered this matter, and they recommended that it also be adopted. I'll be glad to answer your questions on this.
Any questions? So we're still going to call you the Planning Commission.
We will remain the Planning Commission, but now we will have a suspender to go along with our belt.
All right. Will you change clothes this year?
No, sir, we won't change, because we'll still do what we have been doing, and we will.
So will you have a separate meeting for this purpose?
No, sir.
It's the same?
Same thing.
Other questions for Ms. Aitlott regarding designating the Planning Commission as the Design Review Commission?
Mr. Aitlott, haven't you all in the past done design review? I mean, isn't that part of the role of the Planning Commission currently?
Well, yes, it is, and that's sort of, with the Gateway Design Regulations that we adopted in 2004, we were ahead of the state in the legislature in adopting these regulations. We were cutting-edge, if you will. Not long after we adopted them, the state legislature saw the wisdom to allow municipalities to do it, and they passed specific enabling legislation. We've just never gone back and formally designated the Planning Commission as our Design Review Commission. It's possible that the council could create a separate body, but it's my belief that if we had a separate body, it would make it a more cumbersome experience for people who are doing business in our community. And I think that by virtue of the examples we have on Medical Center Parkway and elsewhere, the Planning Commission has done a good job with what it's been doing.
All right. If there are no questions, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 22, Planning Commission creating Section 22-15, designating the Planning Commission the city's Design Review Commission. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. McFarland, thank you.
Second.
Mr. Smotherman, thank you very much. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on November 7, 2013, will conduct a public hearing to consider amending Appendix A zoning, Section 24, Article 3, GDO Gateway Design Overlay District. Planning staff is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the November 17, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Aitlott, proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. In 2004, the city adopted the Gateway Design Overlay District Regulations. We did that after quite a bit of public input, and along with the city's planning for the Gateway, the property that it owned, east of Thompson Lane. The regulations that we adopted, we were new. We didn't have examples in the state of Tennessee to guide us. We pretty much created these on our own. It has proven that they have been good. We have now applied them for 10 years. We've learned where they are weak. We have learned where they're strong. We have learned where we can do better. One of the places that we have found that we are weak is how we communicate to the people who do a lot of the design work. So what we have done, we have taken these regulations, we spent a lot of time in trying to improve them for functionality. One of the big changes that we're recommending is to actually add a checklist format to the items that are required as part of our planning process. So basically, this doesn't change what we're doing, but it improves the regulations that we're using to do it. I have included with your materials, and this is a hard copy, so I can show you about how big it is, but it's all the pages, about 59 pages, and everything that is changed is in the color red and is marked through. That's the deletions. Everything that has changed, that's added, is red, but not marked through. It is underlined. So you see, really easy to see what's changed. A lot of it is tweaking, a lot of it is minor, very little of it is substantive. We did have stakeholder meetings with this. We've went to the public, we asked for participation. They did help, they did give us ideas, and we did incorporate some of them into these regulations. The Planning Commission has studied it, the Planning Commission has conducted public hearings, and the Planning Commission has recommended its adoption. Certainly, if you have specific questions, we'll go through them one by one, but considering the lateness of the hour and the amount of study, I will leave my presentation short and be prepared to answer questions after the public hearing.
All right. Thank you. This time, is there any questions for Mr. Aitlott before I open the public hearing? If not, then I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this amendment, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. At this time, we will consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending Appendix A zoning, Section 24, Article 3, GDO Gateway Design Overlay District. Planning staff is the applicant.
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Young, Mr. McFarland, thank you. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on November 7, 2013, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 33.1 acres located along Thompson Lane, south of Medical Center Parkway, from Gateway Design Overlay 3 District to Gateway Design Overlay 1, GDO 1 District. Planning staff is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the November 17 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green, you may start again.
Thank you, sir. Our first map amendment after your adoption of the changes to the Gateway Design Overlay District is to consider zoning property which is currently developed as the Oak Shopping Center and identified on the map before you as the hatched area. I believe it is a salmon color with black hatch going through it. And the proposed zoning change request is to leave the base zone as it is, but to change the overlay zone from GDO 3 to GDO 1. And we believe that this property is much more similar to the property located along Medical Center Parkway, such as the avenues, and would be more appropriately zoned GDO 1, as it's a shopping center and those regulations are more similar. So the request is for you to change the overlay zone to GDO 1. It is recommended to you unanimously by the Planning Commission.
All right. Questions before I open the public hearing? All right. If there are no questions, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against? If not, I'll close the public hearing. At this time, we will consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Thompson Lane, south of Medical Center Parkway, to Gateway Design Overlay 1, GDO 1 District.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Young. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on November 7, 2013, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 123.2 acres located along Robert Rose Drive and Thompson Lane, from Gateway Design Overlay 2, GDO 2 District to Gateway Design Overlay 1, GDO 1 District. Planning staff is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the November 17, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is for you to consider the overlays district for property located along North Thompson Lane and Robert Rose Drive from its overlay of GDO 2 to GDO 1. It's a similar request as what you just considered, except for the previous property had a different GDO overlay district. These properties, we believe, are most similar to those developed along Medical Center Parkway, where the remainder of the GDO 1 district is. And with the changes to the Gateway Design Overlay standards, which increase the height permitted in these zones, Mr. Smotherman mentioned that there was a property that currently was going on, well, it's been approved final design review last month, whereas the height is not permitted in the current GDO 2 as written. But if you do decide to change the zone to GDO 1, then the height would be permitted by right. The applicants actually preferred to go ahead and make an application to the Board of Zoning Appeals to allow a variance for the height. That will not be necessary with this zoning change, but they didn't want to leave it to chance, and of course, the Board of Zoning Appeals felt it was a very appropriate height, and the location was very appropriate as well. So by zoning this property to GDO 1, it would allow the height as approved by the Planning Commission at final design review by right, and no need for a variance. It also includes, of course, these other parcels. The Planning Commission recommends this change unanimously. The building is the FCM Building, and it's a multi-tenant office building with a bank.
Yeah, it's a beautiful building. The plan on it looks really nice. I saw it in the review, and it looks very adequate and very appropriate for its location.
Thank you for saying that. We worked with the applicants to come up with a project. Of course, they came in with something in mind. We gave suggestions, and I think that the product is far superior than just, you know, just accepting the first round. And the architect was really pleased to work with us and actually complimented our review process and said that he wished that they would apply to more areas. Of course, it doesn't, and how it results a better product because there's more opportunity to do the planning exercises. So we appreciate that.
All right. Any other questions before I open the public hearing? Hearing none. I will now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. If there is no one to speak, I'll close the public hearing. At this time, we will consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Robert Rose Drive and Thompson Lane to Gateway Design Overlay GDO 1 District.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Young, Mr. Smotherman, thank you. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on November 7, 2013, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 26.25 acres located along Wilkinson Pike, east of Gresham Park, from Gateway Design Overlay 2, GDO 2 District to Gateway Design Overlay 1, GDO 1 District. Planning staff is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the November 17, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. This next public hearing is similar to the two previous we just had, in that the request is to change the overlay zone from GDO 2 to GDO 1. The request is for the properties that are shaded green but have the hatched area on them. The area shaded, or the remainder of the property that's shaded green, which you see the measurement of 250 feet, is not remaining, is not being proposed to be changed to GDO 1. It's requested to stay GDO 2. Only the hatched area is being considered to be rezoned to GDO 1, and again, that's because it's similar to those developments that are to the south. The Planning Commission did recommend that this be approved as submitted to you, leaving that 250-foot strip along Wilkinson Pike, Zone GDO 2. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Green? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing. At this time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. At this time, we will consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Wilkinson Pike, east of Gresham Park, to Gateway Design Overlay 1, GDO 1 District.
Move that we accept rezoning.
Second.
Motion and second. Mr. Smotherman, Mr. McFarland, thank you. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on November 7, 2013, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 23.5 acres located along Medical Center Parkway, from Gateway Design Overlay 4, GDO 4 District to Gateway Design Overlay 1, GDO 1 District. Planning staff is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the November 17, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green?
Aye, thank you. Our fourth and final zoning map change request regarding the Gateway Design Overlay District is for property that's shown on the map before you. The map has, it's colored purple, but it's the purple area with the hatch. You can see that the entire purple area is the Gateway Design Overlay District Four, GDO Four. And from this, you can see our GDO district extends along the entirety of Medical Center Parkway, all the way to Memorial Boulevard, and that's where it ends, Memorial Boulevard. And on that site is developed, a retail, there's a retail center there, and Burger King is near that site as well. So the request is to zone the hatched area from its current GDO Four to GDO One. The property does include the old demolition landfill that is currently zoned GDO Four, and this is mostly city property. It does back up to the river, and the Planning Commission is recommending that you do zone the area hatched from GDO Four to GDO One.
All right, questions for Ms. Green before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing. At this time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Anyone here wishing to speak? Anyone at all? Last chance. I'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Medical Center Parkway as a Gateway Design Overlay One, GDO One District.
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. McFarland, Mr. Young, thank you. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Brad.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board as to sole source procurement from Advanced Utility System for Mobile Workforce Management System and amend a task order number three with Weston Consulting to manage the implementation of Advanced Utility System for Mobile Workforce Management. So, Mr. Gore, welcome. Sorry for the lateness of the hour.
I appreciate you all letting me come before tonight to present this material. Thank you. I will go into a little bit of a condensed version, if that's okay.
Without objections.
Without, yeah. Basically, I just want to give you the first slide here, the summary of the project. I got aid for this with this slide from Mr. Rob Lyons. So basically, this, the project itself is, it's a software procurement. What it will do is convert a manual paper process into an electronic process via integration with our new customer information and utility billing system. Basically, work orders, which are now paper and manual, can be transmitted to field techs wirelessly. This obviously creates efficiencies and improves customer service. I'm going to jump ahead to that ROI here in a minute, that return on investment. It has a one-time cost of forty-five thousand. The first-year maintenance is ten thousand, and maintenance for years two through five is forty-five thousand and two-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. This is a sole source procurement. This mobility software does work specifically within the Advanced Utility System, utility billing software. We had originally gone out and looked for more enterprise-level mobility solutions that would work, maybe more GIS-centric, or be able to plug into our GIS system, therefore be able to go enterprise-wide throughout the city. Those systems, when we got into that, they were about three to four times the cost, and basically, it was a little bit more than what we needed at this stage in the game. Our computerized maintenance management systems weren't up to snuff within the Water and Sewer Department, and I think we were getting ahead of the IT plan for the city, which is looking at this enterprise-level solution in around 2017. Real quick, this does align with, and this supports, the effective utility management model, operational optimization, financial viability, operational resiliency, and customer satisfaction, which we have identified as an area in need of improvement. I'm going to jump ahead to the return on investment and just go down a few of those items. Basically, this particular software will save time from our field customer service reps, and it will reduce overtime of our on-call folks at the operation and maintenance facility. It will allow for fuel savings and reduce vehicle mileage. It will increase our response time and reduce, hopefully reduce calls into customer service. And we've given a ballpark estimate of a total annual savings of about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars annually. That would translate into about a four- to five-year payback. So the numbers are more specific in the memo that you have in front of you if you wanted to go through those details. What we're recommending is that we be allowed to procure this Advanced Utility Systems Mobility Workforce Management in an amount not to exceed a hundred and five thousand dollars over the five-year term. Funding for year one would be fifty-five thousand, recommended to come from our reserves. The second recommendation is contingent upon your approval of the first recommendation.
All right, questions for Mr. Gore as to this sole source procurement? If there are no questions, is there a motion to allow him to do this?
Mayor, it's going to increase efficiencies and save money in the long run. I move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McFarland, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Brad.
Aye. You have your system. Now, would you like to amend a task order?
Yes, sir. This would amend Weston Engineering's Task Order Number Three in an additional amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for managing the implementation of this Mobility Workforce Management component into the CIS. This funding is recommended to come from our budget, our FY14 budget for professional services.
And will there be other amendments down the road for IT services or software?
We do, we do expect to come forward with, we still have the Interactive Voice Response System that we are currently in negotiations for a best and final offer to come back to the council. I do hope to have more of a return on investment-type analysis when we come back to you with that request. And of course, the very large, the very, very large solution, or IT solution that we're looking at rolling out, hopefully by mid-year next year, is the advanced metering infrastructure, which gets more into the wireless reading of water. And it totally takes our business practices into a different, it's a true paradigm shift.
All right. So you have this amendment to the task order to allow for implementation.
Mayor, I'll make a move for approval, but Mr. Lyons and Ms. Crumley and Mr. Gore and the Water and Sewer Board, I want to say Orr a lot, because it's getting late, but have really, you know, since Mr. Gore has come on board, I think we can all see the switch moving, using technology as our, a way that we can do our jobs better. Online pay and credit card payments are now, have been done. So, I mean, really doing a phenomenal job on getting the whole department moving more towards, you know, a true 21st century department. So you are doing phenomenal, and please pass that along to the Water and Sewer Board.
Well, thank you very much. The IT plan and the vision of the board, as well as Doug Swan, who has taken on a large project management role and on the implementation of these, and we've got core team. So we've got people pulling double duty in the office, trying to make sure that this comes off without a hitch. So it's really a lot of work on their behalf, too. So thank you.
And I know the capital outlay is expensive, but we're starting to see where there's some efficiencies and savings to the ratepayers now that some of these things are getting, are getting approved and now rolling out. So, you know, I think it, obviously, it's expensive on the front end, but one of those things that I know we continue as we move along, that we see those savings coming back.
And I will say that we are going into such new business practices that we're looking at very conservative returns on investment. And if we get so efficient that through attrition, when we lose personnel, if we find that those efficiencies gained through technology doesn't require backfilling those retirements, then we're going to operate as lean as we can.
All right, thank you. Mr. McFarland has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Young, thank you. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Brad.
Aye. I think all of council would congratulate you and thank you for continuing this effort.
It's a great team effort. Thank you.
At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Murfreesboro Airport Commission to approve Change Order Number One A for Hangar Number Two and Number Three Roof and Exterior Project. Mr. Gurke, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, I bring to you Change Order One A. It's regarding a installation of eighteen windows in the two hangars, and also a charge there to cover some change in the paint color. As you know, we're currently doing some exterior work. The priority in this project was to take care of the roofs of both of those hangars and also improve the look of the exterior of those hangars. We got some excellent bids. We had set up our grants through the Tennessee Arnotics to cover what we felt were going to be some very expensive projects of replacing those roofs. And we got some excellent bids, and what we're trying to do at this time was take care of and try to improve the efficiency of trying to heat these large metal buildings that are basically doors all the way around them. So we're going to try to take advantage of some good bids and try to exchange these windows for some double-pane low-E type windows. And we hope to come back in future with some other changes as well to try to improve the efficiency of these buildings. The total cost of this change order is twelve thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars, and this will be part of the grant and covered at about a ninety-five percent rate.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gurke. Any questions regarding this recommendation? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Young. Please call the roll.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Brad.
Aye. Mr. Gurke, let me ask you about the drainage issue on Airport Drive there, where we've got silt fences. What's doing that?
That is all part of the construction of the Walmart that's going on across the street or next to Airport Drive there, and that's part of their control of stormwater prevention and things like that. And there is drainage that will be going from that lot into the 231 drainage basin. So all that silt fence is in preparation for that construction.
So we allow that on our property? Is that?
Yes, transfer of water from.
There's drainage easements?
There is an easement there. All right, thank you. Very good. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Director with regards to bids for the McFadden Community Center renovation. Mr. Goodman, welcome, and congratulations on all those awards the Parks and Recreation Department received at the TRPA meeting this year.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Good evening, a late evening. I do have one item for your consideration, and that is the renovation bid for McFadden Community Center. And on November the twenty-sixth, we did open bids. We had five bidders. The apparent low bid was Kerry G. Campbell in the amount of seven-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. And we did have one alternate. That alternate was for replacing the lights in the gymnasium. Their bid on that was sixty-two hundred dollars, making a total of seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And I do want to emphasize, this building was built in 1868. Even some of the original equipment is still there, some of the fans and the HVAC systems. So we are replacing all of the HVAC systems throughout the building. We're removing the asbestos. We used a third-party consultant to get a price on the asbestos. When they started going through and looking, all the contractors and doing their calculations, we found that there was a miscalculation in our estimate. And so the, from the third party. And so where we had had twenty-five thousand, approximately estimated for the removal of the asbestos, it's more like seventy-five to eighty thousand. So that added additional plus fifty thousand dollars to the estimate. And then plus, we've got daycare in there, we've got the food bank in there, we've got community development in McFadden, and we're trying to hold a tight time allotment for the removal of asbestos. So we think just coordination and the tight time allotment adds a little bit to that as well. We are replacing all the outside doors and windows. We're adding some interior doors for control. Safety issues that we think that needs to be addressed. We have food unloading and loading from the food bank in the same area. We have daycare kids coming in. We have a lot of participants that are going and coming from those particular areas, and we feel like some separation needs to be made between where the children are coming in for the safety of the children and where people are entering the food bank. So we've made some provisions for a separate entrance for a food bank and a different area for a loading and unloading area. When we got into that, we found that we needed to put in a handicap accessible door for the exterior for the food bank, which I'm sure is an additional cost. We are repurposing the old locker rooms and the existing offices near the gym. Those locker rooms, ever since I've been with the Parks and Recreation Department, have been used for storage. Even when we went and did the ADA updates throughout the city, those were not touched. And if you've been to McFadden, you know there's only two restaurants that serve that facility. There's a toilet in the girl and the men's, and two toilets in the women's. And when you have all of those agencies and the activities that we have, that's not current. So when you start doing the updates, you need to bring that into code compliance for the number of closets that needs to be. So that is something that we have looked at as well. We looked at creating some additional office space that we have lost. And there was one area that the adult education used in North Wing, which was set up so that they had a secretary and you had to walk through that to get to the other office area. And so we've looked at how can we repurpose that space as well and make that functional. We're repairing and refinishing the gym floor. The gym floor was put in there about almost twenty-five years ago. We thought we was going to have to replace it, but after looking at it, we think that we can, we can bring it back to life. And that will be the only place we're not removing the asbestos. The asbestos is in the mastic, in the floor tile. And so there's old floor tile. That was a VCT gym floor. And when we came in and put the wood floor over top of it, if we'd have removed it and put in a new gym floor, we would have taken that out. But since we're just redoing the gym floor, we're not going to bear that expense. We'll do that in the future. Also, the alternate, we're recommending for the upgrade of the lights. We are re-roofing the gym and the storage area on the back of the gym. When we got into looking at how the water drained around the area, because you would go over there, when it would rain, it would pool on the south side of the gym and around the kitchen. So we had to look at the drainage and add some drainage provisions. The water would literally shoot out of the downspouts about ten feet, because all of that was stopped up around the, around the building. So we had to make some provisions for that. We are replacing back home all the new, all the exit lights and the emergency lights. We looked at things that we didn't look at in the original, and that's things like painting lower trim around the gym. And of course, we've had a small concrete pad there for a while we were adding a shelter to, and so that was a part of what we had originally planned as well. In the physical impact, when we started looking at this in 2010, and we had a preliminary estimate run by Johnson &amp; Bailey, we came back and added some additional money in 2012. And it's been a little over a year since we've done that. We put in six-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars, and after deducting the fees for A&amp;E and the associated other cost of sixty-three thousand one-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, that left us with five-hundred-and-seventy dollars and six-hundred-and-eighty-three cents. But we do feel that we have the additional funds to meet these requirements in our 2010 CIP budget. We do incur with Johnson &amp; Bailey that we feel these are the necessary pairs, and we feel like that the cost, we got good bids. If you look at the building, seventeen thousand three hundred and nine square feet, that equates to forty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents per square foot for renovation. And we did present this to the Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Commission yesterday, and it was approved. So we are recommending the low bid of Kerry G. Campbell in the amount of seven-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And we're recommending that the mayor be authorized to sign all the contracts contingent upon the legal department's approval. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
We're going to have to do this again in forty-five years?
We may, Mr. Young.
Mr. Goodman.
Yes, sir.
If we're short, it looks like a couple hundred thousand dollars, and we're going to take that out of two. take that out of 2012 CIP, what, where do we feel like something's gotta lose? What are we feeling like that we'll bump that from?
Preliminary estimates that we got from Sportscom renovation was lower than we had You've gotten into partner?
We're actually gonna be coming into council in January for a borrowing, and we're gonna actually include this overage in that, in that borrowing. That borrowing's gonna include overall Creek Elementary, the next agenda item on the police headquarters building.
Okay.
And we would program it there.
Okay. Good.
All right, any other questions, Mr. Goodwin, regarding this recommendation to accept these bids on McFadden Community Center? All right, if there are no questions, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Smotherman, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Goodwin.
Thank you, sir.
And again, congratulations on all those awards.
Thank you, and thank you for coming in, presenting those at McFadden Community Center. Good folks that were here, volunteers especially. And, and we can't say enough about those. We have hundreds of volunteers in our programs. And of course, we try to recognize some of those as we get along. And you saw the ones that were there, gentleman that was coaching for 35-plus years and made some significant impacts on some young lives, so.
We have a volunteer right here. Mr. Smotherman?
That's right.
Volunteer to coach.
He has, since he has been 14 years old, my understudy.
Yeah, I start, I, well.
Is that pretty close?
I was an assistant when I was 13, but the rules said I had to be 14, and the head coach moved off, and suddenly I became 14 that day.
Why? I wasn't gonna tell that story, but since you did.
Well, the truth is the truth, and I enjoyed 38 years of participation and coaching. And I know that I touched many young men and women, and certainly they touched me as well. And it's a great program that we have, and you do an excellent job leading it. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to let you know, we have, we have about 126 basketball teams getting ready to start. Youth basketball. And I know Mr. McFarland is coaching, and we appreciate your service in that, too. It makes a huge difference. We hope that Mr. McFarland and others step forward and do that. So thank you.
Good, thank you. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the city manager as to request for proposals for engaging a consultant for the comprehensive plan and a request to approve a purchase and sale agreement with HCP Medical Office Buildings 2 LLC for the acquisition of the former Murfreesboro Medical Clinic, 1004 North Highland Avenue. Mr. Lance, proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Our typical procurement process usually involves staff developing an RFP, issuing those out on the street, reviewing the proposals, perhaps going to a board and commission for their review and input, and then bringing a contract to you all for approval. However, in this case, we're actually reversing the process a little bit. The city's done planning in the past. The Blackman Land Use Plan's been referred to this evening, the Highway 99 or the Salem Land Use Pike's been referred to. The CIP, we've talked about it tonight. But this would be the first city comprehensive plan that would include all of the elements of the city being done at one time. And because it's that important, because this will become our vision and blueprint for the next 20 years, we wanted to start with having the city council review the RFP before we would actually issue it. What you have in your packet is the request for proposals that, subject to your approval, would be issued on Monday. The RFP includes a number of elements. I'm gonna very quickly highlight those. I know the hour's late, but this is certainly a very important project, and we want to make sure that what staff has drafted is in step with what your goal for the project would be. We've reviewed requests for proposals from a number of communities to try to get the best components of each and worked hard at this. So, you know, one of the sections would be our population and history. The comprehensive plan would look at doing some projections about our demographics, our population growth. That's certainly gonna have a lot to do with the services that need to be provided by the community. We would have an element, when I use the word element, really, you know, simple, simple term for that is chapter. We would have an element on the economy and economic development, and that's really gonna be, how can we target quality jobs? You know, looking at commercial, office, industrial. We certainly understand that we've been important in the hospitality industry with tournaments and sporting events. So comprehensive plan has an element in dealing with our economy and economic development. Land use seems to be the one part of a comprehensive plan that a lot of folks will quickly gravitate to. That's gonna be the creation of a future land use plan that really becomes a very useful tool for the planning commission, the city council, and the development community as we begin to look to see where should we grow residentially, commercially, and in our employment areas. The major thoroughfare plan, you all are very familiar with. This project would include the required update for our major thoroughfare plan, and that really becomes our roadway-based infrastructure plan, looking at the roads that need to be either constructed or improved in the short, mid, and long term. This certainly includes some computer modeling that factors in those demographic and population growth estimates. We are part of a region here in middle Tennessee, and being in step and in sync with the NPO will be very important. The mayor and I had a meeting with the director of that group today. Housing, our housing stock has certainly been one of the large reasons why people come to Murfreesboro. We've got great housing at all different price points. So the comprehensive plan would look to see, how can we continue to attract both the quality and quantity of housing that's needed for our growth? But we certainly want to have a mind toward the historic preservation, neighborhood preservation, I mean redevelopment and infill opportunities. Mr. Gore talks to us routinely about our utilities and our need to expand water and sewer facilities and looking at our capacities there. Community facility and services will be another element. This is where we're gonna look at our public safety needs, solid waste, schools, libraries, senior center, parks, open space, greenway, and other recreational facilities. We'll have an element on urban design that's really looking at some of our design elements. We talked earlier this evening about our design review and what do we need to do from a code standpoint to make sure that we're staying ahead in terms of our design elements, whether they be the gateway or downtown. Historic preservation and cultural resources. We certainly don't want to forget our past and how can we preserve and protect those areas. The natural resources and the environment, we want to study our stormwater, our open space, watersheds, drainage, floodplain management, and other natural resources. And lastly, the intergovernmental cooperation. One of the things that we're very proud of here is the cooperation that we have with Rutherford County and our neighbors here in the county, as well as recognizing the influence of Nashville on us. Having said all that, when we say it's a comprehensive plan, there really is a lot to this. So as you all have gotten a chance to look at the RFP, we want to make sure that we're on target. And I might pause here to see what questions or observations you might have, and then I can talk about the schedule and funding.
Well, first of all, obviously, I'm very impressed that you've presented this information, and I think it goes very well to describing to our public the types of services and the types of processes and decision-making city staff has to deal with every day. Frankly, public safety is not necessarily included specifically in this item, but this is a great outline for what city staff has got to deal with. And I would hope that you would, with the addition of public safety, possibly put this as an outline on the website so people can get an idea of everything we have to deal with every day. I mean, this is just a tremendously concise document that outlines so many of the processes and decisions that go through city staff every day. So I'm very proud of it from that point of view. I am very hopeful that we have a good participation from our public and whatever we can do social media-wise and otherwise to do this. I know this is gonna be an expensive process. I think many of our residents and business owners would, after a fact, probably understand why this is important, but during the process, I hope we can include as many people as possible. And I realize to our other council members that this may seem like an expensive project, and it's a multi-year project. As has been suggested before, maybe we ought to shut everything down for a while till we get it done. I'm not sure that we have that kind of ability or that we have that kind of power and industry as a council to shut things down. I don't think we want to shut it down, but I think we do want to take a comprehensive look at what we could be doing in the future. And I think that's why this is an important thing to do. Again, it's going to be expensive. I think in the, in the way of looking at it, simply put, it's, it will be less over multi-years of two- or three-year project, if it takes that long, of less than spending one penny of our property tax revenue to, in order to get this done each year for about three years. So that's why I'm, I'm very hopeful that that, even though that sounds like a lot of money, if you put it in that perspective, I think our residents will think that is a value that's well spent. So I hope they do.
Mayor, the city council set a goal of engaging our, our community. We took that and weaved it right into the, the RFP, and so you'll see a section in there about involving the community. What we saw in the progressive communities that are doing comprehensive planning is there's substantial input from the community. And when we talk about the expense, a good deal of the expense comes in making sure that you're reaching out to the public, whether they be face-to-face meetings, social media, online surveys, focus groups. There's a lot of different techniques to try to make sure that the community has a voice in this. This will be a plan the community will participate in, that we know you all want to see. Staff certainly supports that. So that employee, I mean, the citizen engagement is clearly a big piece to this. Now, you know, once you all would bless the RFP, staff would, our goal would be to issue this on Monday. It would make it available on the website so consultants and the public could see that. The proposals would be due back January the 15th, and then we would need to begin to review those proposals that come in. That'll probably take every bit of a month or so before we'd be ready to come back to the council with a recommended firm to get, have a contract with. This budget here, we budgeted $200,000. But again, as the mayor said, this will be a multi-year effort that we would include funding in upcoming years. So it's really hard to give you a, a budget number right now. We'll know more once those proposals come in in January.
Mr. McFarland?
Mayor, the question I had, and this is exciting, and I think you're exactly right. It's a great planning document just to look at. The one question I had, when we, we go through the RFP process and hopefully have a selection ready to present to the council in February, in February, my thought, and would want to see what the mayor and the council think, that this is such a beneficial project for the, for the city. I would like to see, in my opinion, where council and the mayor would have input during that selection process, that we could sit in and, and read through those proposals on who is, who is proposing to come in and really shape the future, shape our community with recommendations for the next 25 to 30 years. So I think, you know, I can't speak for the other council members, but to see, and I guess Ms. McGann, how that would work with council members involved in us sitting in on some of those, those presentations and even going through the proposal process.
There are several options that the council has. Certainly, if more than, you could have a council member who was a member and actually voted. You could have all of the council members able to receive copies of the material and attend, but not engage in something that could be considered deliberation towards their decision, since it would be, you know, a recommendation coming back to you. You might very well, what often happens in these situations is we come up with a shortlist. You might want to not be involved in the initial evaluation, but be invited to attend any presentations of interviews, you know, of the shortlist candidates. I think there's several possibilities there. Certainly sharing the, you know, written materials and the scoring sheets, even if you didn't hear the presentation, so that you had a chance to, you know, assess whether you not thought staff properly weighted the different criteria. Several options.
And one of the things, anticipating that, you know, we put a 75-page limit on the firms. You know, sometimes they like to overwhelm you with paper, and we wanted really for them to cut to the chase, so we put a 75-page limit on them. We also asked them to submit their proposals electronically, figuring that others may want to look at everything that was submitted. If you look in section 4.2 of the RFP, that looks like it's on page 341 of your electronic packet. It talks about, you know, a proposal review team that would be comprised of city Murfreesboro officials and staff. We did not spell out who was on that at this point in time. We left that open-ended, and then.
Dot two. Four dot two.
4.2?
Yep.
Yes, sir. And that the review committee would actually make a recommendation to the Murfreesboro Planning Commission for review and approval before it would come to the city council by state law. The planning commission is the statutory group that's required to adopt comprehensive plans, so we certainly want to maintain their involvement in this as well. But you certainly have the final say on the firm to be selected. And we really would look to take your direction. As I mentioned, we've never, I don't know that I remember a time where we started the process with the council on the RFP. We know it's this important, so we wanted to start here with you all before we move forward, so we're certainly open to your ideas on that.
I think that's a reasonable suggestion, and whatever way we can facilitate that, I hope staff will consider.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Okay.
So this will be out on the street Monday?
We'd issue it out on the street on Monday, and the responses would be due January 15th.
Do you think that's enough time? January 15th?
Yes. We had actually had it earlier in January and then realized with the holidays we ought to tack an extra week or two on that.
Okay, good. That's what I, so you have this request, this recommendation for engaging a consultant.
What are your wishes?
Move for approval.
Mr. Young?
Second.
Mr. McFarland, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye. And one other thing, you know, we talked about bureaucrats. In some ways, I think, obviously, all of us have participated with bureaucrats ruling the world, and some of them we like because they favor us, and some of them we don't like because we don't understand what they're doing. But this is a way for our citizens to really participate across a broad area and let us know what they vision. And then we ask somebody else what the consequences are and how to meld that together into what we all can identify as the, the future. And I think it's a really, it's a good opportunity. So I, I hope everyone will participate, and I certainly appreciate the, the many requests, I guess, that we have had for, from time to time as we look out through our commercial and residential and mixed-use areas now, of where people want to know where we're going and why we're doing it. And, and this will give us some idea of where we're going and why we're gonna go there and how we're gonna get there. So I'm, I'm very pleased that the council has accepted this challenge. So now it's this request for approval of purchase of a sale agreement regarding a police department on, of the former Murfreesboro Medical Clinic. Would you speak to that?
Yes, sir. I'm actually gonna divide my presentation on this item into two components. The first, really dealing with the facility we all know as the Murfreesboro Medical Clinic. And then, once we finish the presentation on the facility itself and take questions and hear a presentation from Mr. Kennon, then I'll file that up in the second half of the presentation, dealing with the valuation of the building and then how we pay for it. So we're gonna divide that, divide this into two, two different pieces. As you all know, the Murfreesboro Police Department's located at 302 South Church Street. That is a 27,000-square-foot building. We're pretty full over there, so much so that two years ago, we moved the Criminal Investigations Division into 8,500 square feet on the South Church Street in space that we rent. When the Murfreesboro Medical Clinic was vacated, it had been analyzed to be used as a multi-tenant nonprofit center. Unfortunately, that project did not happen, but it then came across our radar of an opportunity to move the Murfreesboro Police Department to this location. On September 26th, city council approved a contract with Mr. Kennon's firm for him to do a evaluation of the building as well as a space needs analysis. That report, and so- That report, in some, found that the building was of adequate size, although it would require some substantial modifications. So with that quick introduction, we'd like Mr. Cannon to go through his evaluation report of both the building and the space needs, and see what questions the council might have on the building itself, and then we'll get back into the money piece.
I hope, before you begin, that council's had a time to review the documents that have been, already been presented to us, and they have been quite comprehensive as to, number one, the space requirements that perhaps will be needed with the demographic growth of our city over the coming years, and also as to the appraisals of the buildings, which we had two, and then some commentary on both of those appraisals. And then, three, we saw some engineering descriptions of how the building could be repurposed after the fact, that basically, just to let the public know that we possibly intend just to take the building back down to its skeleton and start over with it. But we have the parking, we have the property, we have the location, and at the price that it's offered, I think maybe there's a good opportunity here. So I'll let you go ahead and get started.
Thank you. I certainly will be respectful of your time. You had the booklet to review for a while, and basically this presentation, there it is. Is the booklet, and I can walk you through it, or I can just start to answer questions as you see fit?
Well, if you would just explain, number one, maybe what you intend or have thought through with population growth and what our police department needs, and what those areas of need are, which would be administration, IT, lockers. That was a very, I thought, a very informative diagram. And then the fact that we'll have to take it back because many of the systems in the building are at the end of their useful life.
Yes.
And why this is or is not an appropriate building for repurposing and the use of our police department.
Well, we assembled a team of McLaren-Wilson-Lawrie and envisioned, advantaged their engineers, mechanical, electrical, and EMC, structural engineers. EMC has extensive experience taking older buildings and refurbishing. They, the Myatt Drive facility that Metro just completed for their labs was a building that was far weaker structurally than this one, and they brought it up to the current codes. McLaren-Wilson-Lawrie is a consultant out of Phoenix. They focus on police facilities, and Jim and I have worked together for the last 10 years. So if I go jump down to Jim's stuff, basically what we did is we came in and over a two-day workshop, we met with all the major components of the police department, interviewed them, understood their needs, and developed what we'd call a, you know, 30,000-foot-high overview of the needs. We didn't really get into that next level of, you know, how does this department physically work with this department and all those space needs? That would be the next step. But we needed, building off McLaren-Wilson-Lawrie's experience of doing several hundred of these, we were able to come in and develop this kind of overview. The police department is, that's really small up there, divided up into administration, criminal investigation, operations, and uniform division. And so basically, Jim goes through and develops these spreadsheets where we look at the staffing, we look at all the different departments and the staffing, and they can be rather confusing, even to me, if you've used them a lot. But basically, you've just got this really long bar, and he's going through all the little parts and pieces. And then when you get down here to the bottom, you get what you really need to see, which is the totals. And what we did is we ran scenarios of, actually, how much space does the police department need today? And then looked at a series of different growth projections. The planning department helped us develop some different scenarios of how the city could grow, and Jim and I worked through how that then affected staffing, because basically, it comes down to staffing, and then staffing translates to space needs. So really, my best diagram is this one. We're currently, I think the police department's in about 50,000 square feet, and we projected that they need about 78,500 square feet currently. And then projecting out to 2030, based on the projected growth of the city, they need about 115,000 square feet. The building you're looking at's 125,000 square feet, so that's a pretty good match. And then that's without starting to build any precinct buildings. If by 2030, you start to build a precinct building, we looked at the spaces that were going in that precinct building versus the spaces that would be in main headquarters, and that took down the needs in the headquarters building by about 10,000 square feet. Most of the main evidence and criminal lab and some other facilities would always be in the headquarters. Really what you're moving out in precincts is detectives and patrol functions. But what that does is it lengthens the amount of time this building can serve for the city. So I think that starts to address that question, Mayor Bragg?
Right.
This diagram kind of helps you understand the uniqueness of a police facility where, you know, you're building a school, you build a school, you have the central office, then you build classrooms, and you get more kids in the school, and all of a sudden you've got to add four more classrooms, and nothing else changes. You can do that. In a police facility, because you're really growing because of staffing, you're kind of incrementally growing everywhere. So, you know, patrol grows a little bit, each one of these departments grows a little bit. So what we do typically is when we plan out the buildings, we kind of leave pockets of space all over the building. So you may see it, the design, where lots of these empty spaces. That's because you want to hide away these spaces so that 10 years later, when the chief needs to add four more detectives, there's space there to add them without having to go add a whole wing. And so you have the advantage of looking at a building that's big enough for your future growth, so that's already built in. This is a quick diagram. The orange basically represents those things that are fixed that you wouldn't want to tear out. The balance of the building is all drywall walls and metal stud, and we recommend, basically, they need to be reconfigured for the uses, because this was used as a medical facility, lots of little doctors' offices, a lot of more open office in the police facility. And then this was just a quick diagram of how the space could fit within the building, where basically, this is the ground floor here, and that opens out to that parking lot. So patrol will be there, evidence, and then some of the support functions for patrol. And then on the second floor, which opens out to the parking lot on North Highland, that would be the public face of the police department, the community rooms, the record rooms, and the community portions of administration. And then detectives and the central break room, because it's really important to make sure you create a place where detectives and patrol officers cross so that they share their cross observations. All right, so that's kind of that review. Remind me again, the other thing you wanted me to touch on, Mayor?
Was the fact that you would basically take the building down as it looks now and to the skeleton and start over with the systems, because most things in the building are at the end of their useful life.
I can probably do that quickly this way. It's a steel-framed structure with metal studs and brick on the outside wall, built in a series of three different time periods, originally built in the '70s when energy was not a concern of ours as much. We can, structurally, we're able to go in and reinforce the beams and the columns and make it resist the earthquake loads and the wind loads that are required of an essential service building. A police building is considered essential service by the building code, which basically means we, as a community, want that building to still be there when we have an ice storm so that they can respond and assist the rest of us. The exterior wall is weaker, and that's part of why we're recommending it would need to be removed, because it's just real thin metal studs, and we can't really economically reinforce it to those loads. Secondarily, it doesn't really have the amount of insulation that would typically require today by the building code, so there's a long-term cost of operating that building if we don't upgrade the exterior wall as far as energy usage. And then lastly, you know, when we first went out there and looked at it, it's like, oh, it's cool, it's a good brick building. And then you spend a little more time walking around, can that go up on screen? Yeah. And you start to see areas where the brick is actually starting to fall out of the wall, where brick and plaster have come together and they're starting to split, where, when it was built in the '70s, we didn't pay as much attention to the fact that a thin brick wall, when heated and cooled, moves, and we need control joints. And so you have places like this where that lintel is forcing cracks, and then where, places like this where the lintel is actually rusted so much it's lifting the brick. So you can't stand back, the building looks in pretty good shape. You get up closer to the building, you start to really understand that the brick wall needs some major attention. Wait, okay. I can keep going further?
Well, the one thing that I think concerns me, did you make the estimate of what a replacement building would be if we started on a greenfield? Who made that assessment?
Jim and I together, based on his national experience and my local experience.
And that those, the numbers on a new building would run at what kind of cost per square foot?
I think we said...
And was that, was that equipped or was it unequipped?
That was the building cost.
That was only the building?
Yeah, we said 295 to 400.
300 to 400 dollars per square foot?
But excluding land costs.
Excluding land costs, excluding equipment.
Right.
When we did the Franklin Police Headquarters, Jim had taught to me about that range at that time. We actually think Franklin Police, we were more in the 260s, 270s.
They spent $42 million, didn't they?
32, 32 million.
Was it 32 million?
36 million. It's been a while. 36 million, but that included land cost and included a 160-car parking deck.
Okay.
And they also added a million dollars because they wanted it to look nicer.
Okay, so they had about 3 million of that was parking garage and...
Yes, sir.
That's a good deal smaller facility, Mayor. That's about 100...
Well, that was the other thing. It was not as big a facility.
Yeah, it's about 92,000 square feet.
Oh, was it that many? I thought it was less than that. Okay.
It was occupied about 70,000, and we had about 20 of future growth.
Okay.
I think what you're getting at, Mayor, is the estimate on a scratch building versus a square-footage price on converting this building.
Right. Because I think there'll be some expense involved in converting it, but I think when you started, the base cost of a skeleton...
The things you can control in construction are the things that are outside the ground. The things you can't control, that you always wind up having to budget for, are the things below the dirt. By buying this building, you've already got the foundations in place, you already have the utilities in place, you already have the parking. You actually have more parking than we think you will need. So therefore, going forward, you're dealing with the things you can see, especially since we're talking about taking it all the way back to the structural frame. So it's amazingly how much we can control by getting out of the dirt.
So foundation is structurally sound?
Structurally sound, yeah.
And you recommended doing some borings of the property, did you, from a movement point of view? Did I see that somewhere?
Yeah, that, you're stretching an architect's brain here a little bit, but that gets into the structural engineer. They understand what kind of rock is underneath us in Middle Tennessee, and then based on the type of rock, that tells them the type of motion they should expect in the earthquake, which then tells them the type of design factors they need to apply.
Okay.
Hard rock. Yeah. Some of it's soft rock, some of it's hard rock, some of it's holy rock.
Yeah.
All right, I'll be quiet. Council may have some questions regarding this recommendation.
Just for point of comparison, as you were looking at the per-square-foot price, using Mr. Cannon's numbers, you're looking at a 36 to 50 million dollar building for the same-size facility if you built brand-new.
And the school buildings are not essential service buildings, are they? They're not, they're not built that way, are they?
No.
Mr. McFarland?
Mayor, I talked to Mr. Lyons about this today. I was trying to look to get a breakdown, you know, to, I just rudimentarily did it myself, to say, okay, you know, land cost would be X number of dollars per square foot, and then, you know, figuring site work, parking lot, sewer and water taps that we already have in, you know, which is extremely expensive. You know, that could easily be on that site, a couple of million dollars just in development parking lot. So really, you know, when I was looking at it, we were really looking at, and looking at the appraisals, we're looking at a building that, for 125,000 square feet, a rough number I came up with was a couple million dollars is what the shell space would be. It's just like 20 dollars a square foot. So I was just trying to back in to see where we would be if we had to spend 200 dollars a square foot. We still would be less than what we would be on constructing a new building. Now, there's always some, in construction, we call "oh-my" factors that we're going to run into, I'm sure, with repurposing a building like this, but the part that I think is enticing in, I think it was Mr. Peck's appraisal, or he had a quote in there or had a comment in there about a, I don't think it was chasm, something about a lot of vacant space that's in that area. And so this is a way that we can come in and help, and help control that.
I was also intrigued when I met with Joseph, that I was thinking it was a little bit isolated, but actually, within the city property, it's almost dead center in the two roads that allow the police officers to get all over the city.
Well, it's closer to our, as close to our old traditional downtown area. It's close to Middle Tennessee State University. It's also close with street access. It has public access.
It wasn't sound.
You know, the redevelopment part of it is very important to me, because I don't want to keep going further, further out and abandoning what we have in the city. And plus, putting all our police department together, I think is very, very important from span of control. You know, you don't build a hospital in pieces all over town. You put it all together concentric so it can operate efficiently, and that's been one of the limiting factors that the police department has dealt with for some period of time, and getting them all under a much larger roof, I think, makes a lot of sense.
And Mayor, I think you bring a good point, Mr. Lyons, and I hope this is something that he's going to continue to research, but, you know, I don't think the general public understands how many, how much square footage is a city that we have in different locations. And, you know, bringing on 125,000 square feet into our city, counting the 50,000 square feet that the police department will be vacating, it's going to have to be repurposed. We really need to look at moving more into what we had talked about, a maintenance where we have someone who their full purpose is to be able to manage these buildings in the economies of scale and how we can save money by having one person who handles HVAC maintenance on making sure that all of those things are done, and takes those calls about, our lights are out, and, you know, and I know, like Neil and Horace, they do a lot of that work around here, but, you know, bringing on that amount of square footage, we're going to have to have someone to make sure and maintain those things.
Is geothermal a possibility on this site?
Yes, because you've got so much acreage with it in the parking lot. It's always a safe place to put it.
Okay. Which, I think that would be even better.
Well, we had, what, an estimated seven-year payout on our schools, and they came down to nearly four.
All right.
So that's something that we might...
Well, the other thing is...
We did geothermal at Franklin.
Our police department does an excellent job in community relations, I believe, and the fact that we can now have a concentric location to bring even more public involvement into our police department, I think is really a positive effort. And if there's any facility that we have that looks a little out of step with today, it's some of the areas of our police department. So I am really pleased that you've given us this vision of where we can go and how we can get it done, and I was very impressed with the presentation.
Thank you. Our team appreciated the opportunity.
I've got one real quick question, and it seems to spur, just raise its head on everything that we do here lately with older buildings. Is there any concerns at all with the asbestos in this building, or was there any asbestos at all in it because of the age of the building?
There's been no study done, to my knowledge, but it's been renovated several times, but that is all, you're correct, that's always a concern. times, but that is all, you're correct, that's always a concern that would need to be evaluated. Although now, I've done several projects recently where we had to remove asbestos, and it's really, the guy comes in, he does the test, he understands that contractor knows what to do with it now, they come in to take care of it and it goes away. It becomes a little bit of an expense, but it's not the scariness that it used to be anymore.
The good thing with this project, it's been renovated three times. 78 or 79 was the first, and then in the '90s from there, so I guess the main portion we'd have to worry about is in the '70s.
The '70s portion. 78, 88, 98.
Which is the smaller of the...
Yeah.
All right, you have this request to approve a purchase and sale agreement. Are there any outs in this agreement? We've got some due diligence period or anything like that?
We've been working on due diligence in September, so we really are ready to go hard with it.
Mayor, I think we've heard from everyone but Chief Christman, and I would just ask, is this something you feel comfortable...
Undertaking, number one. And number two, are you going to be happy?
Absolutely. I think it's the right size, it's the right location, it repurposes a building that's sitting vacant, that has a long history of service to this community. And I think as fiscal stewards, as certainly all of you are and we are, I think it makes great sense. I think you'll come out with a first-class building, as the mayor's described, and it'll save our taxpayers millions of dollars. I think it's a great idea, and our people think it's a great idea.
Mayor, I would just point out in terms of the, David's going to cover the contract, just getting ready to.
Mayor, in response to your question... We still have three outs. We are currently looking at the title commitment. I don't see a problem, but we've still got time to examine that. We are having a survey, a new survey done, so title as well as survey, if there's a survey problem, don't anticipate it, but certainly if there is, we have an out. And we are having an environmental assessment performed, what we used to call a Phase One, and if that shows problems that haven't been discovered by the due diligence we've done to date, we do have an out. So we have three potential outs if problems develop.
Thank you.
Yeah, and under the proposed contract, there would be earnest money of $250,000, and we would look to close this by December 20th.
Wow.
We're looking to close quickly.
Really? All right, our first bid tonight is 4.7 million. Is there another bid lesser?
And the appraisal?
All over the board.
Yeah. Let me just touch on that just very quickly. I know it's late, but I want to make sure we cover this space. The city had an appraisal done on the property. Mr. Peck's appraisal came in at $3 million. The seller got an appraisal done. They took a different method of, an approach. Their appraisal showed $6.4 million, so, you know, I looked at the seller and realizing there was such a big spread, it really didn't make sense to have a third appraisal done. So we both jointly hired Marvin Mays. We paid 50% of Mr. Mays' bill, the seller paid the other half. He did a review of it and bottom lined his, and he found what Mr. Peck did right and what Mr. Peck did incorrectly in his opinion, and likewise with Mr. McGuigan's appraisal. But he bottom lined the building at $5 million. After that review report was in, sat down with the sellers and was able to negotiate a price of $4.7 million.
It's exciting, and with that move for approval, subject to staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland, Mr. Young. Any other questions for our call for the vote? Please call the roll.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. Thank you. Thanks to you all for the work, and of course, it's been a long time, but, man, what a great opportunity, I believe. Excellent. All right, at this time, beer permits.
Mayor, we have a couple tonight for your consideration. The Junior League has a special event being planned for January 25 at the Embassy Suites, and their application is in order. We also have a small discount store at 1925 West Cassis Pike that's changing ownership, and the owner is also a different owner, and that has met our background requirement. We are still waiting for them to pass their codes inspections. We would like to issue that permit once that has been done successfully.
All right, is there a motion to accept these beer permits as they've been explained to us? Mr. Young, thank you. Your second? Mr. McFarland, thank you. Please call the roll on the beer permits.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. If you look at the statements to be considered for payment, you can see kind of why Black Friday sales were down. We're not spending quite as much money as we ordinarily do, so Cyber Monday, maybe we'll catch up, but those are the statements to be considered for payment. What are your wishes?
Move the pay bills.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Second.
Mr. Smotherman, seconds, please call the roll.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye, I don't have any board or commission appointments or other business from staff or the council to come before the council.
Mayor, the only thing you'd want to make a comment is, I know this is more on a national level, but also someone that everyone knows about, but with the passing of Nelson Mandela.
Thank you. Anything else? I hope our other council members get well, and we have one, I think, that had a big day for a daughter, so we wish them luck, and we'll see them soon. You're adjourned.